Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Tuesday evening, February 18th. I now call this meeting to order. Will we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Certainly Mayor Newsom, Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmembers Fierko Guditsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Here.
And Mayor Newsom?
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, please raise your hand in Zoom, using the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Starting out tonight, our first ceremonial item is Black History Month Proclamation. And we'll have a presentation from Alexis Lewis from the NAACP San Mateo Branch. I'm going to read a proclamation. Whereas since 1976, Black History Month has been an annual celebration of Black history and culture, and a time to recognize all that shapes the identities and experiences of Black Americans. And whereas the Association for the Study of African American Life and History has declared this year's theme, African Americans and Labor, focused on the various and profound ways that work and working of all kinds, free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary, intersect with the collective experiences of Black people. And whereas the theme, African Americans and Labor intends to encourage broad reflections of interests, sorry, of intersections between Black people's work and their workplace in all iterations and key moments, themes, and events in Black history and cultural across time and space throughout the United States, Africa, and the diaspora. And whereas the religion, social justice movements, and education studying African Americans' labor and labor struggles are important, organizing, faux pas, for new interpretations and reinterpretations of the Black past, present, and future. And whereas the City of San Mateo community is proud to celebrate alongside our fellow Black Americans, the contributions, the incredible contributions and leadership in labor that Black community has gifted to all of us. Now therefore, I, Robert Newsom Jr., the Mayor of the City of San Mateo, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby recognize the month of February 2025 as Black History We'll give you a moment to speak, and then we'll come down and take a picture.
Okay. I'm Alexis Lewis, and this is Catherine Hayes-Burt, and we're both on the Executive Committee of the NAACP. I'm also a resident of District Three of San Mateo. And I want to thank you, Mayor Newsom, the City Council, and the city staff for recognizing Black History Month. I have a short statement I'd like to read. Black history is American history, and this recognition highlights the contributions Black Americans have made to our communities and the nation. Celebrating Black History Month serves as a call to continue working toward a more equitable future for all of us. This proclamation represents a commitment to addressing systemic inequalities and creating a more inclusive society. I hope we can all work together to ensure San Mateo remains a welcoming and diverse city where everyone is welcome to live and thrive without the fear and threats of racism or harassment from government officials or law enforcement. Thank you.
To the mayor and city council, I am Catherine Hayes-Burt, NAACP Executive Committee member. The 2025 Black History Month theme is African Americans and Labor. This theme will highlight the contributions of Black workers to the country's development and the ongoing struggles for racial and economic justice. In Black history, the labor movement is marked by significant contributions from figures like A. Philip Randolph, who founded the Brotherhood of Sleeping Car Porters, the first major Black labor union, and fought for racial equality within the workforce through organized labor. Other key figures include Hattie Canty, a prominent strike leader in the Culinary Workers' Union, and Bayard Rustin, a civil rights activist who played a vital role in combating racism within the labor movement itself. As we celebrate Black History Month, let us use this opportunity to reflect on the past, learn from our history, and work together to build a better future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good to see you as well.
Agenda item number two, also a ceremonial one, Sojourn to the Past, a presentation by Lieutenant Matthew Earnshaw.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Matthew Earnshaw, and I'm a lieutenant with the Police Department here. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. In August of 2024, members of the San Mateo Police Department were invited to participate in this sojourn project with the San Mateo, with the San Francisco Police Department. There were six Bay Area law enforcement agencies involved, and about 85 law enforcement officers total went on this trip. We, as a department, sent another group in November of 2024 with similar numbers, but this time we included community members from each agency's jurisdictions. Slide, please. What is the Sojourn Project? For over 20 years and through 100-plus trips to the American Deep South and Washington, DC, the Sojourn Project has been immersing people from diverse backgrounds in academic, transformative, week-long, moving classroom journeys. Along the path and through the lens of the modern civil rights movement and America's struggles for liberty, it is an experience where participants meet people who lived this history and learned about sacrifice made and lives taken to achieve equality and the right to vote. Slide, please. In August, we sent eight law enforcement officers on this journey. Our chief, Ed Barberini, Captain Matt Lithine, myself, and Police Sergeants Kassaza, Hopch, Mejia, Roden Spiel, and Unga. Each believe we should continue to send members of the Police Department on this journey to learn about history through the lens of people who've experienced it firsthand. In November, we sent 10 Police Department employees, which included me, Sergeant Cullum, Police Officers Allison Adel, Carmen Chice, Jason Chice, Dylan Kazar, Kiana Roca, Property Supervisor Sierra Green, Community Service Officer Lisa Tottola, and our probation officer, Mimi Page Broden. We also included two community members on this trip, Ms. Gloria Brown and Ms. Angela Miller. Some of our participants are here tonight, wearing their... Slide, please. I asked our participants to describe their experience in one word, and here are their responses. You can see transformative, inspirational, healing, educational, eye-opening, perspective, and awestruck. Slide, please. With us tonight is also the founder and executive director Jeff Steinberg. Jeff, can you please stand? A little bit about Jeff's background, after 14 years of teaching Advanced Placement US History, Mr. Steinberg founded Sojourn to the Past out of a passion for exploring civil rights and the desire to provide a transformational, experiential, educational experience for his students. Slide, please. Our journey begins with us landing in Atlanta and boarding a bus which takes us to Montgomery, Alabama, Birmingham, Alabama, Hattiesburg, Mississippi, and Memphis, Tennessee in six days. Slide, please. In Montgomery, we are given the opportunity to explore on our own for a day, and there are several museums and historical locations to visit, including the Freedom Rides and Rosa Parks Museums. The Legacy Museum is a museum in Montgomery where the entire class attends together for three-plus hours. The Legacy Museum displays the history of slavery and racism in America. This includes the enslavement of African Americans, racial lynchings, segregation, and racial bias. Slide, please. While in Montgomery, we also learn about the Little Rock Nine. The class can meet Minnie Jean Brown Tricky and Elizabeth Eckford. These two ladies were, who volunteered to be the first Black students to integrate into Little Rock Central High School on September 4th, 1957. In November, Minnie Jean stayed with us for the entire trip, and people were able to really talk with her and hear her experiences. It was amazing. Slide, please. Our next stop takes us to Birmingham, Alabama, where we learn about the Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth, who was a Baptist minister and civil rights activist who led fights against segregation and other forms of racism during the civil rights movement. Reverend Shuttlesworth died in 2011, but he and Jeff became dear friends over time. Across the street from Reverend Shuttlesworth's statue is the famous 16th Street Baptist Church. This church was central to many things in the 60s, but also where four girls were killed in a bombing in 1963. I included a picture of the memorial of the four girls across from the church. We also heard from one of the victim's sister, Lisa McNair, and a survivor of the bombing, Sarah Collins. They're shown here in these pictures. Slide, please. Also in Birmingham, we are able to go into Kelly Ingram Park. It's across the street from the 16th Street Baptist Church in a central location for the Children's March in May 1963. One Webb met with us to discuss how she was recruited into the march, what she witnessed, and her experience being arrested during the Children's March as a 14-year-old. One is an amazing person, and interestingly, she became the second African American female to join the Birmingham Police Department. Slide, please. Our next stop takes us to Hattiesburg, Mississippi, where we learned about Vernon Damer Sr., who committed his life to helping Black people register to vote during the Jim Crow era. Vernon was known for telling people, if you don't vote, you don't count. Klansmen firebombed his house in January 1966 with his family inside, and he died as a result of his burns. We were very fortunate to meet his wife and two children, are pictured here. They were in the house that night. The family spent two days with us, and we visited the farm and the house where this occurred as well. Vernon Damer Sr.'s final resting place and the memorial statue of him in downtown Hattiesburg. Slide, please. Off to Memphis, Tennessee, and straight to the Lorraine Motel, where Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated on the balcony pictured here. Mr. Steinberg reads from the book Walking with the Wind, written by the late Georgia Congressman John Lewis. We also listened to Dr. King's final speech, which he delivered on April 3rd, 1968, to a crowd of striking sanitation workers at Bishop Charles Mason Temple in Memphis. To be sitting in the same place where he was killed, listening to his final speech, was a truly moving experience for all participants. On the final day, we toured the National Civil Rights Museum at the Lorraine Motel. On this slide, you can, you can see a picture of the balcony where Dr. King was killed, and across the way is where the shooter took the shot. The museum also preserved the two rooms Dr. King used mostly when he stayed at the Lorraine Motel. The other pictures are from the museum, which include the "I Am a Man" protests from the sanitation workers in Memphis and a replica bus Rosa Parks protested from. Slide, please. In June, the San Mateo Police Department plans to send another group of employees and community members to experience the Sojourn Project. Slide, please. This is the website for more information, www.sojournproject.org. Please take the time to visit the site for more information. Thank you for allowing our department to share this with you all tonight. The Sojourn Project is an incredible journey. And then finally, do you have any questions for myself or Mr. Jeff Steinberg?
Okay. Go ahead and open it up. Does anybody have any questions? Want to start?
So not so much questions, but I just wanted to make, I was tickled to see this on the agenda. My public service career started on the Sojourn to the Past trip. So I went on the second trip in 2000 when I was a junior at Carmont High School.
Hi Nicole.
Hi Jeff. Sorry, Mr. Steinberg.
No, Jeff.
So I was like the second or third trip by that point. I met Congressman John Lewis, I met Reverend Shuttlesworth, I saw Bill Clinton speak at the funeral of the civil rights leader, met Minnie Jean Brown Tricky, met Elizabeth Eckford, and so many others. It inspired my service, and it's why I'm, honestly, it's why I'm up here today. So in lieu of any questions, I just want to thank the San Mateo PD for going and taking time to, to, to share that. I want to thank our community members and the, for attending as well. And I want to thank Mr. Steinberg, because honest to God, I would not be up here without you. Truly. Like that, I'm, I'm an immigrant kid. We, we didn't have a whole lot of history in America by that point, and I learned so much more about America because of that week-long trip, and it changed my life. I still have my copy, I still have all of the books that we have, we, we had. I remember walking across the bridge on, on the Selma Bridge. The memories still linger, and I'm so blessed to have done that in high school. So thank you so much for providing that for our community. I would not be here without you.
If I may share just for a moment, it doesn't happen without a lot of hard work. And the vision of Chief Barberini to make this happen, and Lieutenant Earnshaw, who believe in, in how do we fight racism, they believe in diversity, they believe in equity and inclusion, and I know those words are a little taboo in some parts of society today, but when we break them down and look at what those words are, these men represent the best of what America is. And they're not only heroes in their job, but they were able to honor people who are, who are heroic from the civil rights movement. I love what these two women said, and thank you for sharing. It is our shared American history. It is our shared history that we all need to know. I just want to finish by saying how blessed I am to work with so many wonderful people from San Mateo PD. I live in Millbrae, I grew up in San Mateo County, I taught in the San Mateo Union High School District before doing sojourn. My brother's the ex-Mayor of Sacramento, I should say the former mayor of Sacramento, former mayor of Sacramento, and a former, former pro tempore senate. I finish with this quote. When Lieutenant Earnshaw showed where Dr. King was assassinated, there's a plaque right underneath it, and it says what we're all doing here. And the quote was said at Dr. King's funeral. It's from the Bible, the Book of Genesis, and it was said at his funeral, it says, "They said one to another, behold, here cometh the dreamer. Let us slay him; we shall see what becomes of his dreams." And because of Chief Barberini and Lieutenant Earnshaw and the work you're all doing, we're helping keep those dreams alive, and we must, they must keep them alive. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Moving right along, we're moving on to the consent calendar. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
Certainly Mayor Newsom. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, San Mateo County Transportation Authority Measures A and W Primary Grant Agreement. Item number four, Legislative Advocacy and Grant Writing Services Agreement. Item number five, Legal Advertising Services Bid Rejection. Item number six, SEIU Local 521 Non-Merit Part-Time Unit Memorandum of Understanding Adoption. Item number seven, San Mateo Police Sergeants Association Memorandum of Understanding Changes. And finally, item number eight, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the Fiscal Year ended June 30th, 2024 Approval.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I don't want to pull an item, but just a comment on number four.
Okay. Well, my next question, yeah.
Um, for the Legislative Advocacy and Grant Writing Services, could we get an update on how it's going to hire a grant writer for the city?
So as part of the agreement, basically what the grant writing support is, it's unlimited, so there is no limit in the number of grants that the grant writers will write on behalf of city staff. They will also provide services to our foundations and nonprofits that are connected to the city, which include the Library Foundation, Parks and Rec Foundation, and the Police Activities League. We also have a grant, basically cross-partemental grant committee that we'll be establishing, and that will also help support basically, really emphasizing that we need to go after other people's money, so the grant dollars, in order to help supplement monies towards big projects and programs and initiatives that we're looking to do here in this community. The city previously hasn't had a grant writer retained, and so this will really help us. I look at it as one of the many multi-prongs that we're looking at from a financial sustainability approach as well, in order for us to go after different grants that align with the city's work. We're not just going on doing one-offs, it has to be aligning with the strategic priorities of our departments and this council overall. Does that help you?
It does. Thank you. That's it.
Anybody else? All right. If any member of the public who wishes to comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only. Mr. Clerk, do we have any?
Mayor Newsom, I have not received any requests to speak in chambers. I do have one hand raised in our virtual environment, Mark Joseph. This is for consent calendar items only. If you intend to speak on general public comment or another item on the agenda, please lower your hand. Now, if you keep your hand raised, we will call you for public comment on the consent calendar. So that's one request to speak. So for council adopted rules and procedures, that's three minutes per speaker.
Thank you.
Mark, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, can you?
Yep, we can hear you, Mark.
Okay. I want to thank you for, thank, speaking to me today. And I want to thank the Deputy Mayor, Adam, for calling me today. I requested the City Council members to give me a call, but I just got a call from the Deputy Mayor, and again, I want to thank Adam for that. The reason why I'm here speaking, my wife would like to have been speaking, but she's down with the flu. And our issue is the whole defund the police movement that's been going on for quite a few years. I do not allow my wife to go out, or shouldn't say, she doesn't want to go out alone at night. I always take her to the local stores once it gets dark. And in particular, there's two stores, TJ Maxx, who encourages, or not, I shouldn't say encourage, but doesn't discourage shoplifting. And we have gone into that store and just be amazed on how to even...
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, Mark. It sounds like your comments are better suited for our general public comment, which we're about to get to in just a moment. This is for consent calendar items.
All right. Fine, I'll just stand by then.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate your understanding.
Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment for the consent calendar.
Okay. Is there a motion from the council to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
Mr. Clerk, can you please call roll?
Certainly Mayor Newsom. Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Fierko Guditsky?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council. address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking, excuse me, from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to, to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the council's discretion and can be extended if the council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Mr. Clerk, could you please tally the total number of requests to speak on public, general public comment?
Certainly Mayor Newsom, we have a total of 13 requests to speak in person. If you are attending our virtual environment and wish to speak on general public comment items not on the agenda, please raise your hand. We will be announcing the name of the last speaker, after which time we will not take any additional requests to speak. So please keep your hand raised now. So that's a total of 16, oh, still have a couple more coming in. Give you just a few more moments to raise your hand if you wish to speak. So Olivia McNally will be our last virtual comment speaker, and that is a total of 17 speakers. So per council adopted rules and procedures, that'll be two minutes per speaker. So we'll begin with our speakers in chambers first. So if I call your name, if you can please line up to my right, that would be greatly appreciated. So we'll call your name in order. And we'll set the timer for two minutes per speaker. Our first three speakers will be Dr. Vikash, Jennifer Pachaluk, and Michael Lynn.
Are we ready? Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council Members, I rise to speak in opposition of the Bayside Bus Depot. I am not an attorney, but the ordinances I will reference are written in plain English for residents to understand and interpret. Otherwise, our legal department would be overwhelmed with toilet installations in our homes. Ordinance number 2008-10 clearly indicates that vehicles exceeding five tons are prohibited on Kehoe beyond Norfolk Street as indicated in Section 11 dot 28 dot 036. The proposed depot will enable approximately 120 to 160 trips per day, depending on which bus storage number you use, which would violate these ordinances. Please look at Section 11 dot 28 dot 36. It appears that the designated areas are to accommodate Samtrans bus routes. I cross-reference them to the Samtrans bus schedule, but someone should check, double-check. The school district has tried to raise an exemption for buses, but to clarify, truck also means passenger buses as exempted in Section 11 dot 28 dot 038, under jurisdiction of the Public Utilities Commission, as long as they do not deviate from their designated areas. However, this exemption does not include school buses. Ordinances number 2013-8 indicates vehicles exceeding five tons cannot park certain designated zones, and we are not zoned for it. Highlighted in Section 1 states vehicles exceeding 10,000 pounds or five tons and buses defined by California Vehicle Code, Section 670, which include buses. I want to finally say, sadly, the children in residence of Parkside can suffer from the emissions from these vehicles, such as asthma, bronchitis, lung fibrosis, and lung cancer long-term if they are exposed 120 to 160 trips per day. That's 21,000 to 28,000 trips per year, per school year. So I want that to be for the record. Thank you.
Our next three speakers will be Jennifer Pachaluk? Pachaluk, thank you. And Mikael, apologies if I'm mispronouncing that, and Christina Horlitz.
I am commenting on the proposed Bayside Academy Bus Depot project. Unfortunately, the SMFC school board has indicated through both their actions and words that this board does not think they are accountable to the residents who live in the neighborhoods they serve and the taxpayers who fund their projects. I want to make it clear that the school board has not sought out feedback from stakeholders or addressed our neighborhood's stated concerns with this project. As a resident of the Parkside neighborhood, I believe that the school board's plan to park 35-plus school buses at Bayside Academy has been uninformed and the board has not been transparent with the families and staff who use this location and equally the residents of the Parkside and Shoreview neighborhoods. Furthermore, I believe that creating a bus depot at Bayside compromises the health, safety, and well-being of all the communities in and around the school. I believe that the San Mateo City Council does want to represent and advocate for its constituents, and I thank you for that. Therefore, my neighbors and I are making the following two requests to city council. One, to ensure that an environmental impact report is done to inform the public and decision-makers about the potential impacts of this proposed project on the land, waterways, people, and wildlife that are in the vicinity of the designated project site. We want to know if their project plans comply with CEQA and EPA standards. Of note, this neighborhood is not zoned as a commercial and industrial site. The second request is to ensure that a traffic impact analysis and study are completed to evaluate factors, including the impact to Kehoe Avenue, especially since the street is on a sensitive landfill and has already been protected by ordinance number 2008-10, as well as evaluating roadway capacity, traffic endpoint, impact, pedestrian safety, just a couple, bicycle safety, parking needs, intersection operations, and other environmental impacts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Mikael Lynn, followed by Christina Horlitz and Sima Patel.
Good evening, I represent the Shoreview Parkside Neighborhood Association. Our neighbors are alarmed over the San Mateo Foster City School District proposed bus depot at Bayside Academy on Kehoe Avenue. Our neighborhoods are built on landfill. We know it is unstable ground. We've all experienced settling and cracks in our walls from the sanitation plant piling driving, pile driving. With 38 buses traveling along Kehoe Avenue, creating 27,360 bus trips per school year, 152 trips per school day, we know there will be more vibrations that will cause more settling. And it's not just houses. Kehoe Avenue east of Norfolk, which is designated off limits to vehicles over five tons, will be damaged over time. Do we want another sinkhole like the one that happened on Hawthorne Drive and engulfed a garbage truck in 2023? And who pays the damages? We have an ordinance that even prevents Samtrans buses from traveling on that stretch of Kehoe. School buses are not part of the exceptions because they are not regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. There was a reason to vote the ordinance into place. Let's work together to prevent this ill-conceived bus depot project. We implore you to help stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Christina Horlitz, followed by Sima Patel and Tresina Fafita.
Council Mayor, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak about the proposed bus depot at Bayside Middle School. Having 35 to 40 EV school buses driving back and forth twice a day, four trips total, 180 days a year, is not feasible for Kehoe Avenue to handle. There is an ordinance prohibiting against vehicles over five tons on that street, a weight limit that an EV bus with very heavy batteries will exceed even without students in the bus. This ordinance is there for a reason. The neighborhood is built on landfill and has very soft soil underneath the street and therefore can't accommodate this kind of heavy bus traffic on a daily basis. We already seeing a lot of potholes due to more rain in the last few years. Homes along the street will most likely develop cracks, as it already has from all the pilings, in the wards where the buses shifting the soil and shaking the homes, which can and will lead to a class action lawsuit. Who's going to pay for that? And what will, God forbid, if there will be a sinkhole due to all the extra weight? A bus falls in this sinkhole, then what? The neighborhood is not built for this traffic at all. It's already very congested and residents will have no other choice than to drive on smaller side roads to leave the neighborhood. Many of these roads are so narrow that two cars can't even pass each other with also many cars parked on the streets. This can easily lead to accidents involving cars, bikers, and pedestrians, and the students. I'm asking the council not to give the school district an exemption to drive the buses on Kehoe and to park on Bayside Middle School, but for them to find a better, suitable parking area. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sima Patel, followed by Tresina Fafita and Kevin Simpson.
Good evening, City Council. I currently serve as the Chair of the Planning Commission, but I'm speaking tonight on my own behalf as a resident. 10 days ago, Mark Kramer was killed while walking along Fashion Island Boulevard. This makes a total of three pedestrian fatalities and one critical injury in the past five months that we know of based on reports in the press. In an update to Safe Streets Advocates, Director of Public Works Matt Fabry noted the immense amount of work the city has done and is doing to comprehensively plan for safer streets, including the 2012 Pedestrian Master Plan, the 2015 Adoption of a Vision Zero Policy, the 2020 Bicycle Master Plan, the 2024 Local Roadway Safety Plan, and the currently under development Safe Routes to School Strategic Plan. I think it is painfully clear that plans do not save lives. The safety of our community members should always be our city's top priority. We must move faster to implement these plans. We must do better at collecting data to help us understand whether safety improvements are actually working to make our streets safer. And if they are working, we need to defend their importance to the health and safety of our community and not roll them back. To paraphrase former councilmember Joe Gothles after the 2015 Adoption of Vision Zero, "Safe streets shouldn't take decades and decades to implement. No loss of life is acceptable." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Tresina Fafita, followed by Kevin Simpson and Trina Pierce.
Hello, dear City Council Members, I'm Simone Baltadano, the Community Programs Coordinator at the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center. Our organization works with the San Mateo Health on substance use and prevention for the youth of San Mateo County. We would like to share information on the prevention efforts occurring in this county and share resources for you as policymakers.
Hello, my name is Tresina Fafita. I work at PCRC as a custodian justice coordinator at a local high school in EPA. If you're ever in need of information regarding alcohol, cannabis, or opioid prevention efforts in our county, please contact us at www.pcrcweb.org. Enclosed in this packet are flyers with the following information, alcohol and drug prevention in San Mateo County, and San Mateo County Health and Community Partners that we work with.
As well as National Infographic Summary of Health Impacts of Cannabis Legalization from 2023 and 2024. Thank you for your time, and please don't hesitate to contact us for more information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Kevin Simpson, followed by Trina Pierce and Allison McQueen.
Thanks, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Belated happy birthday, I missed you last, last time, but I got you this time. This evening, I'm sad and angry, sad that for the third time in just a few months, a pedestrian has been killed on our streets. I didn't know Mark Kramer, but you didn't have to know him to feel some modest version of the grief that his friends and family feel. He was by all accounts a lovely man and the very best of San Mateo. I'm angry because I wonder if his death will even matter, and that's a harsh thing to say. But just over the past few months, losing these pedestrian deaths in our streets, they bracket choices that we're making. Just two weeks ago, you made a choice to set into motion the destruction of the most visible safety improvement we've made in our city in years. And what's even more disheartening is you made that decision based on a very poor collection of data. For example, in an accident very similar to Mr. Kramer's death, a person on my neighborhood, just a block and a half from my house, was hit by a car on his bike before the bike lanes were installed and put into a coma. And in the presentation made by city staff, that data did not show up. It showed no accidents at Humboldt and Tilton. And we told you about this, and not one of you asked a single question about that data and other data points that I and others pointed out to you. And so the question I have is, are we serious about this? In setting that choice in motion, you put a torpedo right into the heart of the Bicycle Master Plan. What's the plan for that going forward? You've also called into question the complete street studies. We did two of them, we all trooped up to the King's Center and put dots on maps. What are we doing?
Thank you.
We have to do better.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Trina Pierce, followed by Allison McQueen and Ju, uh, Juliana?
Good evening. I have been a resident of North Central for over 60 years. We in North Central are very proud of our district, but sadly, many feel that the city of San Mateo has treated our neighborhood as inferior to other neighborhoods. I have worked with the city and the residents of North Central to build trust in our city personnel. We have had challenges, most notably in 2022, when the then-mayor signed with a vocal group of predominantly younger, white male voices, and not with the residents who have repeatedly objected to parking being removed. He showed the lack of concern and respect for our residents and our neighborhood, even though we had a petition with over 700 signatures of North Central residents. But as terrible as that experience was, we have not encountered the level of continuous hostility as we have with one city commissioner who follows an agenda that does not benefit the residents of North Central. Instead, almost every week, the person speaks here in council, on social media, and in the local paper, saying she is the planning commissioner but speaks as a private citizen. And earlier complaints about her, we've been told the city that has a right to speak. This is not about free speech, it is about someone being biased. We do not understand how the city can defeat, defend her as a regular speaks and racist and prejudiced remarks as a city leader. She needs to serve all San Mateos, and her comments, both professionally and personally, need to reflect that. By taking action for her numerous times on these hateful comments, it seems the city of San Mateo is cosigning onto her races and prejudiced remarks. I really don't think you want residents to believe that. The commissioner attempting to separate herself from her official duties by speaking as a private citizen supports the same interests voiced by the younger white males in their privileged and in their pricey neighborhoods within San Mateo. As a commissioner, she is supposed to serve all of San Mateos, but she has consistently shown that her allegiance is with the special interest.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Allison McQueen, followed by Juliana and Eddie Lee Alvarado.
Good evening. Three citizens of San Mateo have been killed while, while walking in our city in the last five months. All three deaths occurred in corridors that the city has plans to improve, but the city has not taken action to make these areas safer. Peninsula Avenue, the number one project on the Bicycle Master Plan, Yolanda Villar, died here in September. Hillsdale Boulevard, the shelved safe over crossing project, an unidentified pedestrian died here in November. Fashion Island Boulevard, a safety project with incomplete funding, where Mark Kramer died earlier this month. I don't have a lot of power in this city, but you do. Now I'm asking you to save a life, because another pedestrian or cyclist is going to die in our city. While our complete streets plans and bicycle master plans are aging with little to no action, I am pleading with you to make safety a real priority in San Mateo. We don't need more plans or consultants, we need execution of the plans we already have with zero rollback of existing safety infrastructure. And yes, I'm talking about the Humboldt Street bike lanes. When a person is maimed or killed on Humboldt as a result of your choice to remove the bike lane, we will be back here to say their name, just like the names of Yolanda and Mark. Having a bike lane on Humboldt Street saves lives that we'll never know about. But if and when it's removed and the white chalk lines are drawn around a dead body, we will tragically know the folly of this council's choice. By consistently showing up to advocate for pedestrian and bicycle safety, I can say I did everything I could as a citizen to prevent another tragedy from happening in San Mateo. Can you say the same? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, if you wouldn't mind just clarifying your name. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Giuliano Carlini, I'm speaking only for myself. I'm here asking you to, please, we need more folks to shift modes out of cars, onto bikes, pets, mass transit. We need it for safety, as many of other folks are talking about. We need it for, to fight climate change. We need it so we can have a vital city, livable neighborhoods. We need it so kids can have some autonomy. When I was a kid, parents didn't drag us all over the place like they do today. All right? All of these things need us to do more cycling. Folks aren't going to do it when it's dangerous. Ripping out the big chunk of the Humboldt Street bike lane is going to make it more dangerous. Staff is pointing to the fact that it's going to be putting in a bike boulevard, like a 28th Street. 28th Street. I cycle a lot, including 28th Street, often a couple of times a week as I'm coming down to a couple of coffee stops that I go to after going to CSM. It's not safe. No bike boulevard with that kind of design is safe. I ride 8,000 miles a year. I ride a lot of bike infrastructure. It's not safe. Folks won't ride when it's not safe. At the December 4 meeting, we had some discussion about why more folks aren't using the Humboldt Street bike lane. They don't feel it is safe enough. They don't like the bumpouts, right? They get pushed into traffic. We need to figure out how to make it safer, not more dangerous. Take out that chunk of bike lane, it will be more dangerous, you'll have fewer people riding, it will be more dangerous. We will not be fighting climate change, we will not be reaching any of the other goals that I know you all think are valuable. I understand the residents' concerns. Please, let's figure out how to address the parking issue without tearing out the cycle lanes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Our next speaker will be Eddie Lee Alvarado, followed by Rick Sekuda and Laura Wood.
Hi, I'm Eddie Lee Alvarado, and I live in Shoreview neighborhood, and I'm here to oppose the bus depot that's supposedly going into the Joinville Bayside School area. And I just want to say that our neighborhood is already impacted with double the traffic and pollution that other neighborhoods have, and we are also going to have to be supporting vehicles that will not, will be well over 80 additional vehicles on our streets parking because of the people that will be driving these buses. And the roads on the east side are already in poor condition, and nothing's maintained over there. It seems like there's everything, everything, you don't care about Shoreview. It's like they plan, everybody else is okay, but not Shoreview. Our streets are like falling apart, potholes all over the place. So I just want to say that I'm totally against it. Our exit routes are already gridlocked, and now we're going to have all these buses that are planning to come over, and I just totally oppose it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next three speakers, our next two speakers will be Rick Sekuda, followed by Laura Wood.
Good evening. On the matter of the school bus warehouse, I want to echo and support everyone that has spoken previously on this subject, including pedestrian safety. I wanted to point out that the school board is like a shadow organization that operates behind a veil of secrecy. Our representative Danielle just found out about this project and the vote to begin construction on it a week before that vote was to take place. And about one hour before the meeting, Dr. Vikash found this ordinance that forbid heavy vehicles east of Norfolk and specifically on Keough. That gave us time to consult with our city attorney, our city manager, who've been very helpful, and our local representative. And talks are ongoing right now to determine the viability of this project. I think you've heard all the complaints from the community. Also, there is a concern as to this land, which some of it belongs to the city of San Mateo, and some of it is leased by the city of San Mateo. And this would appear to break that lease and deprive of us of our property in our recreational area. There's just an absolute lack of transparency, communication, outreach, and engagement on the part of the school board. We can't allow this bus warehouse in our residential neighborhood, and we need the school board to come out of the shadows and be transparent with us. As a way of sending the message, I ask that our city attorney, our city manager, our city council, Park and Rec, Department of Public Works, stand fast and resolute and vigorous in your efforts to protect the east side community. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker in chambers will be Laura Wood.
Hi, I'm a long-term parkside resident. Thanks for your time. Many San Mateo residents are deeply disheartened by the lack of safe streets. The city government is frequently criticized online for not heeding its citizens' safety concerns, leading to a sense of frustration and helplessness among the community. In my opinion, the process of initiating speed bumps, stop signs, et cetera, is too unrealistic to effect real change. Fifty percent of the homeowners of one given street or neighborhood have to vote on a mailer to initiate a safety improvement. Sixty-seven percent of those who respond have to vote in favor of such an improvement. When I compared these threshold percentages to our actual voter turnout percentages published by the state of California, this disparity was stark. For the presidential primary, only 34% of the voters voted. In the general election of 2022, 49% of our registered voters voted in San Mateo County. These events are widely marketed on several platforms, while a safety initiative is a single one-piece mailer in your mailbox. It is crucial that we reevaluate these thresholds, particularly in areas near schools and parks. We must make street safety a priority by creating a dedicated line item in our budget. Additionally, I urge you not to approve the heavy school trucks and parkside in Shoreview. Please ask your public works about our roads, they're really bad. We're the last people to get the safe streets, and we're still not finished. And parts of Norfolk are not finished. And just, you know, rest in peace to Mark, the person that lost his life in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment, our first speaker will be Mike Swire. Mike, please unmute your mic.
Yeah, hi, thank you, council. In response to the third dead San Mateoan on our streets in five months, residents have sent almost 2,000 letters to the council, city manager, and public works staff. I thought that this might spark some action from the city. Instead, I've received a letter from Public Works Director with vague statements about the city's actions to make our streets safer, without acknowledging Mr. Kramer's death or commitment to not tolerate any future fatalities for those on foot and bike. The city is not changing any direction, it's continuing to maintain the status quo. Apparently, nothing exceptional has happened to merit extraordinary action. As pointed out earlier, the letter says nothing about the fact that presence of the Bike Master Plan and the Pedestrian Master Plan and the dozens of projects therein are only as strong as the council's willingness to approve those projects. They mean nothing if the council rejects them. The council, previous councils have rejected the number-one project in the Bicycle Master Plan on Peninsula, where another San Mateoan died. And just recently, the city council decided to move forward with spending up to $3 million to rip out the bike lanes on Humboldt Street next to several schools on the most dangerous streets in the youngest neighborhood in the city with the highest number of residents without cars. Why? To create 100 more parking spots in a neighborhood where residents were promised a permit program to combat the root cause of the parking challenges and oversupply of cars and low-value parking on these streets. This includes residents with five or more cars, cars that are inoperable, RVs and commercial vehicles that are illegally parked, parking by non-San Mateos who park for free in North Central to get a cheap Uber to San Francisco. And meanwhile, 700 spots remain empty and chained off blocks every night. Personally, I find it disingenuous of the city to tell residents that safe streets are a priority when projects move so slowly. I also find it disingenuous for the city to say that North Central wants these bike lanes removed. Per the city's own survey, a plurality of North Central residents support the bike lanes, and a plurality of residents do not support the proposal to require children to ride in the same lane as 50,000-pound garbage trucks.
Thank you.
Please be honest. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Mark Joseph. Mark, please unmute your mic.
Thank you again to the Deputy Mayor, Adam Lorraine, for calling me today. I requested all of you folks on the council to call me, but so far, only one. Anyhow, I'm talking about the strip mall that's near Highway 92, TJ Maxx, and also Ross, and then there's Trader Joe's there. There is a theft ring that's constantly going on, and it's not, you know, women that need to buy baby formula to feed their kids. These are, I believe, people from San Francisco coming, because we caught a conversation with the San Mateo PD, speaking to one of the criminals that was stealing from Ross, that this is not San Francisco County, this is San Mateo County, and this is San Mateo. The TJ Maxx that my wife goes to, and I drive her at night because I can't trust crime from not happening, and ever since this defund the police movement started a few years back. And they will not call the police when they witness someone shoplifting. They told us, my wife and I, that we could call the police because they're instructed by TJ Maxx not to call the police. And then what's going to happen, it's not if, it's when it's going to happen. There's going to be probably a violent crime happening due to this kind of criminal ring that's going on, and it's a fence ring that you can see, my wife and I followed a couple of them after they did some shoplifting at TJ Maxx. They go over to the 7-Eleven over there, and there's a fence ring, and there's a guy that picks up all the items that they steal on a daily basis. We've seen it numerous times, and the times that we see it is when we go there. I hope the council could do something about it, and again, refund the police, not defund the police.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you. We'll now close public comment. And before we go into our next item, we're going to take a 10-minute recess.
Just real quick before we take the recess, I'm happy to speak to a couple of the items that were raised this evening for the council and for the community. So first and foremost, on the bus depot over at Bayside School, the city staff met with school district staff last week, and based on our conversation, what we heard from the school district was that they are not looking to move forward at this time with the bus depot out there at the Bayside School. They're looking at other locations currently. There are issues around the lease agreement that the city has with the school district, and then also looking at zoning for the area as well. And we want to be collaborative partners as a city with our school district agency and look forward to collaborate with them should they wish to look at other locations in town or at this location. But there needs to be additional conversations before anything moves forward in that direction. So just wanted to update the council on that. And then as to the fatal hit-and-run that happened, Mark Kramer and the loss of life on February 8th, it's tragic. And really, when we're looking at just overall, just first and foremost, our police department is looking for support from the community to provide any information because there were no witnesses to this incident itself. There was also, I'm hearing from many speakers, of a message that went out from our public works director earlier today, and I heard the numerous speakers talk about the number of transportation plans. There's over 13 here in this city. And we need to be able to implement too and move forward at the same time. And I know within that message that I saw was that we have $24 million that are committed towards traffic improvement programs or projects here in this city. The council also put forward $0.5 million, $500,000 this current year in quick-build projects as well. But we need to work collaboratively and work with our community members, all stakeholders and community members, about trying to implement and do work and get these projects out the door at the same time. And so I want to acknowledge that and that we're working hard on this. The other piece is just on the Humboldt Bike Lane program, and we've heard comments on that, and just want to, once again, just speak to that the direction from the council was for us to continue to engage the community. There was no decision that was made. They looked at potential alternatives of bike boulevards on Fremont and on Idaho, but there has been no decision made. There still needs to be significant community outreach and engagement, and then we would bring what we have heard back to this council before anything would take place and seeking any type of final direction. So that concludes my update to the council this evening. Thank you.
And through the mayor, if I could just, a couple of things, just to continue that discussion. I think as part of what we're going to be looking at, or what staff is going to be looking at in terms of bike boulevards, bike lanes, there was also a commitment from the city or from the city council to put traffic safety first before anything happens, so that we approved the lighting, but there was also a commitment that whatever the final solution is, that it would include traffic safety and not just what we're doing with the lanes. And number two, I think there were a couple of comments just to suggest that they be included, the idea of looking at how do we standardize data and being very clear about the data that we're going to collect as part of this exercise, because I think that's a really important way for people to understand and feel comfortable. And then also, I heard a suggestion tonight about looking at how residents have to do complete surveys and the thresholds to get those surveys done for traffic safety improvements. I think that might be an interesting thing to take a look at as part of all this, too.
So I'll take all that into consideration at the same time, and just to make it very clear from staff's perspective, whatever council's decisions are in the future just about the Humboldt Bike Lane, there has to be some network of connectivity within this area, in this area of the city, whether it be alternative paths or the existing bike lane, what have you, just whatever we're thinking about, there should be some type of connectivity within that neighborhood itself. That's it. Anyone else? I think we got to be careful because it's not an item this evening.
All right, well, we'll close, we'll close public comment, and we'll reconvene at 8:15. All right, everybody. Welcome back. We're now moving on to the new business portion of the meeting. Subject nine, enforcement citation authority ordinance introduction. Introduce an ordinance to amend San Mateo Municipal Code Section 1.04.050A enforcement citation authority. And we're going to have a presentation by Jack Johnson, Waste Management Supervisor. Welcome, Jack.
Thank you very much. San Mateo Municipal Code Section 1.04.050A provides authorization for specified employees to issue administrative citations to enforce various provisions of the municipal code. This section requires an update to allow public work staff to enforce San Mateo Municipal Code's Chapter 7.35, as well as other sections relating to solid waste. We request this update to allow staff to enforce relevant solid waste sections of the municipal code as required by law in order to meet the state mandate set out in SB 1383 and to complete other aspects of our work. A little background, organic waste is the largest waste stream in California. Organic waste, when buried in a landfill, generates methane gas, which is a short-term super pollutant greenhouse gas. So in 2016, SB 1383 established statewide methane gas emission reduction targets in the statewide effort to reduce emissions. This is the largest waste diversion legislation passed in the last 30 years and the most innovative climate change legislation yet enacted. It will reduce greenhouse gas emissions, improve our soil, reduce the impact of drought and wildfire, and extend the life of landfills. SB 1383 regulations require each jurisdiction in California to provide organic collection services to all residents and businesses, establish an edible food recovery program, conduct education and outreach to the community, purchase recovered organic products, monitor compliance and conduct enforcement, maintain records, and report to CalRecycle. Among other things, the law requires that jurisdictions enforce compliance with organics collection, subscription, and edible food recovery elements of the law. In 2024, after a two-year education and outreach period, mandatory enforcement provisions became effective. The city has been working with our partners, Recology San Mateo County, Rethink Waste, and the County of San Mateo Sustainability Department, to provide a robust public education and outreach campaign, including onsite visits, bill inserts, phone calls, emails, and letters. However, we still have over 300 noncompliant accounts, which is down from over 1,000 when we began. In order for staff to have the necessary authority to enforce for violations of our mandatory organics code, an update to the enforcement table is necessary. In addition, because the city experiences many incidences of abandoned shopping carts, this ordinance will give authority to the solid waste team to enforce the provisions of our abandoned shopping carts code section in order to more effectively handle this aspect of illegal dumping. Passage of this ordinance will transfer responsibility of the abandoned shopping cart program from code enforcement to solid waste. I refer you to the redline version of the ordinance language in your packet. The changes are important but relatively minor. They include updates to the titles of Regulatory Program Manager, Environmental Programs Coordinator, Environmental Compliance Inspector, Solid Waste and Recycling Program Coordinator, and the Waste Management Supervisor. It adds Section 3.2, which is garbage, and 7.33, construction and demolition, and 7.35, mandatory organics, and 17.29 to the Public Works Department. 17.29 is the abandoned shopping cart chapter. Staff recommends for the city council to approve introduction of the proposed amendments to San Mateo Code Section 1.04.050A. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jack. Before we open it up to the council, we're going to open it up to public comment. Do we have any requests for public comment?
Mayor Newsom, I have not received any requests to speak in chambers. If you are participating virtually and wish to speak on item number 10 on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand. Now I will give you just a few moments to do so. Mayor Newsom, we have not received any requests to speak on this item.
Well, then I will close public comment and open this up to questions, comments, and directions from council. Does anyone want to go first?
I move that we accept.
Wait, you do want to say something?
I do.
Okay.
Sorry.
Nice try.
I was trying to give other people a turn. Could you just, great presentation. Could you confirm, you know, what are the citation amounts?
A violation of this code section 7.35, at least, would be a $100 fine for the first offense, a $200 fine for the second, and then a $500 fine for the third. And I believe that's in one calendar year.
And then could you clarify what edible food generators are?
Edible food generators are defined as tier one and tier two generators by the legislation, and more specifically in our code. Generally, they are supermarkets and grocery stores, large restaurants, large venues, places that are generating a lot of edible food in excess of what is either being sold or consumed. And it is required to be collected and redistributed to people.
Okay, great. I think those are the only clarifiers I have, but thank you.
And through the mayor?
Sure.
Just, I am very supportive of this. And one suggestion about the shopping carts, that is going to, the more we can tell people what to do. I get questions all the time. I see this shopping cart. What do I do? How do I do it? So if solid waste is going to take it over, make the whole world know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. If I can just add briefly, so I believe each violation is a separate offense. So, you know, as an entity commits multiple violations, each violation could be citable. So I just wanted to make that clarifying comment.
It's more than one calendar year.
Go ahead. Sorry?
I believe it also can recur more than once per calendar year. It's...
Yes, then that's what I meant by each violation. Each violation, you can have multiple violations in a calendar year. You could have...
And you can have multiple violations at one site.
Yes.
You can have multiple violations at one site, and you can go back multiple times per year. So if you go back and it's not corrected, when you get to that 500, you can cite 500 again and again.
Okay. Thank you for...
The city attorney's office will be conducting an enforcement training for public work staff on March 5th.
Let me ask just two quick questions. This is primarily commercial to start and then eventually may move into residential? Or?
I have not issued any notices of violation to residential subscribers for noncompliance yet. We have concentrated our efforts in the commercial sector because there were the most not, there was the most noncompliance there. And I will have to eventually turn my attention to residential noncompliance.
Okay. And when that happens, you'll be reliant more on reporting from Recology? Or will you always be reliant on reporting from Recology to know?
Subscription is if you have either signed up for Recology service, requested and received a waiver, or demonstrated that you are self-hauling what you generate. I will be looking for any one of those three as a way to say that that entity is compliant. If none of those three things holds, they would need to be cited.
And then the team that does the enforcement, I mean, assuming it's you, but in addition to you, how many people will be working with this? Or is this all you?
There are five of us on the solid waste team, and there are 10 people in regulatory compliance. And the inspectors on the rest of my division are able to cite as well.
Okay, great. And then the last question was, when we do move the abandoned shopping cart, can we make sure that we have a very, like, like Councilmember Lorraine said, like Diaz Nash said, do we, can we make sure we have something that's very visible as to, you know, where you can go on the website and find, how do I report, you know? Because I think that that's really key.
I think public education and outreach is always key, and it will be a main component of what we do. It's a tough problem. We will be getting a consultant to see what else is going on in the state. I may stay with the status quo for a bit longer so that I can understand the situation on the ground more. We pick up 900, between the streets program and the solid waste program, there are 900 illegal dumping incidences a year. A lot of them include abandoned shopping carts, but it's a big problem.
Absolutely. And I just want to be thoughtful. Yeah, no, I appreciate it. That's great. Thank you. Well, thank you for your presentation. Do we have anyone who wants to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, can you please take the yes?
Just to be clear, the motion is the staff recommendation to introduce the ordinance.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmembers Vierko Guditsky?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
And the motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you all.
Moving along, we're moving on to campaign contribution limits review, a presentation by Martin McTaggart, our city clerk. We'll be reviewing and providing direction to staff on whether the city's campaign contribution limits and campaign rules should be amended, or if no changes should be made, and we'll receive an update on the city's campaign finance dashboard.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom, city council. Bring up the slide for us. The item before you in this study session is our post-election campaign contribution limits review. During this presentation, I will be providing a brief background for the city's campaign contribution limits. I will also share some statistics from the campaign activities for candidates running for the November 5th, 2024 general election. We'll also be providing the council and members of the public with an update to the city's campaign finance dashboard. And finally, the council will be presented with some options for consideration moving forward. Taking things off with just a little background analysis, in 2004, the city council, or excuse me, 2005, the city council added Chapter 2.80 to the San Mateo Municipal Code entitled "Contributions and Loans to City Candidate Campaigns." This established limits on the amount of contributions that may be made to the city council candidate campaigns to $250 by an individual and $500 by an organization, as well as limiting the amount a candidate can loan to their own campaign to $15,000. In 2017, the city council amended the limits by increasing the amount an individual can give to $500 for an individual, and an organization was increased to $1,000. Section 28080 requires that the city council conduct a post-election review of the requirements of this chapter no later than three months following the certification of the election for the purposes of allowing the city council to consider the ongoing appropriateness of the provisions of this chapter, which is included but not limited to the amount of the contribution limits established under this chapter. The city council certified the results of the November 5th, 2024 election with Resolution 14224 on December 9th, 2024. The slide on your screen here now shows a comparison of campaign activity between elections held between 2017... held between 2017 and 2025. And the data is included within the agenda report for this study session. I won't go through all of the numbers, but you can see the column on the far right, 2024 is what we're looking at in terms of the most recent information. As the consular are aware, this analysis does not provide an apples-to-apples comparison for campaign activities for each year, given our transition to district elections first rolled out in 2022. However, as noted in the next few slides, this is the first analysis that will be conducted with all five seats transitioned to district-based elections. Herein, consul will note the relatively similar dollar amount range of average amount raised by candidates in 2017 and 2022. The averaged raised per candidate between 2022 and 2024 increased by 72%. The average of independent expenditure per candidate in 2024 reflects a 51% decrease of that in 2022. And that is a significant decrease from the 2020 figure seen on your screen here. Also, just a brief note about in-kind donations, so that's non-monetary donations, also increased by roughly around 93% between 2022 and 2024. And then, as was mentioned earlier, this is a summary of campaign activity for all five elected consul members, this being our first district, all district election analysis. So some interesting information there. On the topic of transparency, just a brief note, this is not something that's new, but it is something that we're very excited about, and that is the city's campaign finance dashboard. On March 1st, 2021, the city consul reviewed provisions of this chapter. And during the study session, with broader intention to increase public transparency into campaign finances, direction was given to staff to create a finance dashboard. The city clerk's office led an interdepartmental scoping exercise and created the dashboard for the November 8, 2022 general election. And today, we're very proud of this. The city's campaign finance dashboard is the only serving dashboard amongst municipalities within the county of San Mateo. The dashboard is on the city's website and is available. We did receive a large number of interest, or a large number of clicks into our dashboard. Staff received assistance from members of the San Francisco Ethics Commission, the Oakland Ethics Commission, Netfile, Maplight, and many others into the development of our dashboard. Also want to pay a particular word of thanks to the invaluable work put in by our city staff. So Jonathan Strange from our IT department, Richie Pierce also from IT, and Aaron Fellers were instrumental in updating the dashboard for the 2024 election. While prior to the release of the dashboard, a lot of this information was made available publicly, but as council members will know, a lot of that information can be difficult to find. Or basically, what we did was aggregate all of that information into one centralized location. So rather than users having to flick through 501s, 460s, 410s, a lot of that can be complicated, individual filing information, this aggregates that information and brings it all into one location, which we're very excited about. The visual on your screen provides an overview of financial activities detailing the dollar amounts being received and spent by candidates. Users are provided with user-friendly breakdowns, types of transactions, including contribution, loans, debts, liabilities, and expenses. Another feature offered by the campaign dashboard is the ability for users to easily review the proportion of contributions by type of contributor to a candidate that includes individuals, committees, self contributions, businesses, and others. The campaign dashboard also provides users with the ability to see proportion of contributions provided by candidates by dollar range, including small being under $100, medium $100 to $499, and those that are $500 and above. One addition that we added to our dashboard this election was the introduction of ballot measure information. So that was a new feature for this election. We're very pleased with the ability to add ballot measure information. We do plan on continuing to improve on that service as we do not currently have all of our, the independent expenditures associated with the ballot measure campaign activity. The data comes to us from a slightly different data source. So it's not currently included within the dashboard, but that is something that we are working in the future to make sure that that information is also available. We do link where we don't provide data on our dashboard. We do provide links to external sources. So members of the community are able to drill down and find that information elsewhere. In terms of tonight's review, just wanted to give the consul with a little bit more analysis statewide in terms of other factors to consider. So all cities within the state of California are subject to some form of campaign contribution limits. The state does set default limits, which are seen on the table at the top of this slide. So the default for individuals, small contributor committees and political parties for 2025 is $5,900. Another resource that we looked into was California Common Cause Produces. And this is a nonprofit organization that looks into campaign transparency and measures to improve campaign finances. They created a California Municipal Campaign Finance Index with data that has been updated as recent as 2024. And it is a comprehensive analysis of campaign finance regulations. The MCFI, as of 2022, out of 124 of California's 482 cities, representing about 44% of the state's population, has self-imposed contribution limits lower than the AB 571 limit, which was 4,900 at that time. And amongst those 124 cities, which have an average population of approximately 1,400, sorry, excuse me, 1,400,000, the average contribution limit was $711. MS, MCFI data is, there's a lot of information in there. We took a stab at doing a kind of apples-to-apples comparisons, looking at agencies that also have five by district consuls, looking at individual agencies that have similar comparable population sizes as well. So we, looking at that data, we were able to pull eight different findings. So 22 or 81.5% of the 27 cities within the study have individual donor limits. Finding number two, $1,233.18 is the average self-imposed donor limit amongst those 22 cities with individual donor limits. Finding three, for cities with a comparable population size to San Mateo, so approximately 20% of its, within approximate 20% of its population, the average donor limit per individual was $768. Finding number four, so 2 or 7.4% of the 27 cities, including San Mateo, had different contribution limits based on the giver or anarchoes individuals and organizations having different limits. Finding number five, 12 or 44.4% of cities adjust limits to inflation. So typically, that's through CPI. Bear with me just one, we're back. Apologies. Item number, finding number six, 9 or 33.3% of cities limit loans on campaign, candidate campaigns, which as mentioned earlier, the city of San Mateo does also. Finding number seven, 3 or 11.1% of cities have voluntary expenditure limits, including San Mateo. And finding number eight, none of the 27 cities have any kind of public financing campaign. And then for tonight's discussion and where we're looking for consul consideration and direction, item number one, alignment of contribution limits for individuals and organizations. As mentioned, San Mateo currently sets contribution limits for individuals at $500, and organizations have a $1,000 limit. Staff is recommending for consistency purposes that we align those limits moving forward. Item number two, looking at whether consul wishes to make any adjustments to contribution limits. Bear with me just one moment. Item number two, adjustment of contribution limits. So as was mentioned in our analysis, research would indicate that San Mateo's contribution limits are generally lower than those of comparable cities. So Redwood City was excited as an example, has a contribution limit of $1,000. So tonight, we're requesting consul direction on whether that limit should be increased to, from $500 to $750, or $1,000, similar to the Redwood City model, or another amount to remain consistent with our peer jurisdictions. Item number three, the review process. So the reason we're here tonight for the post-election review, whether consul wishes for staff to continue to conduct these reviews on a post-election basis, or whether there's an appetite to peg contribution limits to consumer price indexes, as was mentioned, is another option. And finally, this is some options for feedback for city consuls. So voluntary expenditure limits. This was rolled out for the 2024 election. This was our first experience of performing voluntary expenditure limits. So staff has direction for next steps. Voluntary expenditure limits are pegged to CPI. So we'll be coming back to the city consul with those adjustments in the form of an ordinance introduction. However, at this time, staff are welcome to receive any feedback from the consul on voluntary expenditure limits. Campaign finance transparency. Lastly, we're very proud of our campaign finance dashboard, but if there's any feedback or options to improve that, we're happy to hear. So I'll pause there and invite the consul to take public comment.
Quick, get over there. Just kidding. I see we have at least one public comment.
Hello?
Just one?
We have just one request to speak on this item, and that is Kevin Simpson. So that'll be three minutes.
Welcome.
Thanks, counsel. It's an interesting thing to contemplate, but here we have an opportunity not to drag more cash into elections. Why raise the limit? Why make it more important for people to be able to raise large sums of money to run for a local office? Leave it at $500. I don't really care what Redwood City does, or Millbury does, or New York City does. We should be looking for every opportunity to get money out of politics. And I realize you have to pay to get your, to get your voice out there and to become known in the community. But more money doesn't equal better communications. Sorry. Thanks.
Mayor Newsom, that includes public comment.
Thank you. We'll now close public comment and open it up to council comments. Does anyone want to go first? All right, we'll start this way, work our way that way.
Thank you very much through the mayor, and congratulations, city clerk. Once again, a great presentation. I love the campaign finance dashboard. You know, it's, and I think it's wonderful that we're excited that we're the only ones, but I find it very sad that we're the only ones. So I would love to find ways to try and promote this, because I hear from people all over the Bay Area about it and organizations. So I would really encourage us to do that. So, couple of thoughts here. The chart of cities in the very, the very beginning, you know, with the city, the population, public financing and all, there are very few that are from the Bay Area. They're sort of all over California. So that, I don't know why that's the case, but it might be more relevant to have more Bay Area. Just one suggestion. Let's see, in terms of, I think it's also great that the ballot initiative, the issues are in here. Absolutely, it should be in. And I was going to ask about the independent expenditures, but you answered my question. I might suggest that the pie charts, where you've got all the spending, it made it sort of confusing, because in this particular election, the Measure T spending was so much greater than the candidate spending. So those pie charts sort of didn't make so much sense. So maybe take a look at, everything else was great at that, but that would be one thing to, maybe you split them out, maybe you don't. I don't know.
Yeah, I can maybe just speak to that one through the mayor. So we did look at different options when we were rolling out this portion of the dashboard for the first time. And we wanted to come with an option which wasn't going to require asking users to navigate to a separate site. So we decided to consolidate the information to a single visual. But as you rightly mentioned, council member Diaz Nash, that that does come with some trade-offs in terms of visuals look a little bit overwhelming. And, but that's good feedback for us to have and something we can take into consideration.
It might be a different way of doing it.
For sure.
And I just, a confirmation that when you, you put in the, how much, the voluntary spending limit, and how much each candidate was spending against it, that did not include independent expenditures, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so I've got a question that I don't know whether it's exactly on topic, but it is. I would love as part of this post-election analysis to look into the issue of campaign signs. Because I think that in terms of our, our office, your office, everybody takes an amazing amount of time and effort, and a lot of frustration. And, and I don't know, looking around, is there a better way to do it? But I would really like to suggest that that be part of the conversation.
Yeah. And thank you, council member Diaz Nash, in raising this topic. While it's not the main focus of this, this particular agenda item, I think what we can briefly just comment on is acknowledging some of the challenges within our 2024 election. We received approximately 60 sign-related campaign, campaign sign complaints. We did have some challenges just in terms of keeping up with those and making sure that all of the complaints got responded to in an efficient time. Every election, from election to election, you get, you know, very, variety of different issues can appear, signs being placed in the median, repeat placement of signs in medians, reports of signs being stolen and placed in the median by other campaign staff. To this point, it has been a complaint-driven process. We go through our notification and inform of the campaign committees. And currently, we rely on the committees to be responsive to that and to acknowledge the complaints and follow up. There is certainly some low-hanging fruit as it relates to improvements that we can make to our enforcement of the sign ordinance as it relates to campaign signs. Some of that is communication. So currently, our website does not have any information other than the municipal code. There's no outreach information about what's permissive and what's not. So we did get a number of complaints that were actually not violations of the sign code. Our sign code does allow up to four campaign signs in certain intersections. So that was misunderstood by residents, and I think we can enhance our communications approach there. Reporting mechanism. So one of the things that we're looking at is a CRM tool in the city. So that could be something that individual users could report the complaints, upload pictures. And that's something that really helps us in terms of enforcement, is getting in front of that and communicating with the campaigns effectively. And then reviewing what other cities are doing. So we can take a look at some policies, administrative policies produced by other cities and bring that back for further review, looking at cities like Foster City, for example, who do things a little bit differently from us. So learning from our peers and learning from where we can do better.
Well, that would be something that I would suggest maybe other council members can speak on, but I would be very supportive of.
I would just echo that sentiment. I'm supportive. And I actually like the idea of CRM reporting. I don't know how complicated that would be, but seems like a great idea.
One more reason. Okay. And then just finally, I would be fine with aligning and doing it at $1,000 with an auto CPI increase.
Mr. Mayor, man? So I just want to thank Martin for a very, for a very comprehensive report, and the whole city clerk's office for everything that they did. And then Public Works, who was really great about like removing the signs and being super responsive. And as someone who ran in the last cycle, and the only person who ran in the last cycle with the competitor, I want to tell you that it was a joy. My campaign team really spoke well about having, about being responsive and just working with your team. So I want to thank you for that. So a couple of things, I think me and the former mayor are sharing a brain, because I also wanted to bring up campaign signs. And one of the things I would like to think about, am I allowed to talk? Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay. So what me and, what I would like to discuss is potentially the Foster City model, which is what I really enjoy, is that Foster City delegates certain corners of municipal land where you're allowed to put up signs. So you're not allowed to put it anywhere except for the 10 designated places or whatever. If we're much bigger than Foster City, obviously that wouldn't quite jive, but I'd love to explore that. Like you can put your sign on this corner, otherwise it's removed. I would like to maybe talk about how long we have signs out. I think right now we can put them out since August to the election date.
Yes, it's 90 days.
That feels a little long, given that no one pays attention to their ballot until like maybe September. And it does really create a lot of, I'm sorry. But it does create a lot of extra work for you because signs are going out as of August. And I don't necessarily know that it's, the impact is there. So I'd love to talk about that. I am also someone who ran, again, I ran last year. And I chose not to take the voluntary expenditure. Because for me, it just didn't seem, I knew that I, it, the only thing that the candidate gets for having a voluntary expenditure is a mention on the website and then a mention in the Daily Journal. Like, can we do anything to incentivize that? I would have liked to take the voluntary expenditure. I think it's good, echoing what Mr. Simpson said, I think it's good practice. But it, the, the reason to do it wasn't there. I knew I could outraise and I knew I could, yeah, I knew I could raise all the money I needed in order to have a competitive race, an effective race. So I'd love for us to discuss if there's anything that we can add to that to make the voluntary expenditure limit more tempting. And I will also say that with regards to the contribution limit, I would be okay with 750 for a personal contribution, but I don't know if I'd be comfortable with higher than that. Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez, just on the other two topics for where we're looking direction. So alignment of contribution limits for organizations and the review process.
So, so I keep contributions for my personal thoughts. Organizational contributions, 1,000, personal contribution, 750. Come back to council. I would not be comfortable with automatic CPI.
Trying to let others go first. So great presentation. I too wanted to echo that I really appreciate the dashboard. Generally, I love data and I think it's really great that we have a mechanism for transparency. And I wish other cities did too. So, you know, whatever we can do to help promote this, I think it's really awesome. And I actually looked at it throughout my campaign and I actually referenced the previous election that we had to kind of understand as a first time candidate, what I would really need. I did want to bring up the voluntary expenditure limit. So I did take it along with Charles Hansen. It definitely made me feel good to take it, but I think I echo Ms. Fernandez's comments that I don't know what's stopping anyone from not raising more. And so if there was a way to make it just, just maybe in other incentives we could explore. I do think for areas like mine where district elections are new or having council candidates run for the first time, it is a good thing. And I would like to see it, you know, continue on, but I just don't know that it stops anyone and prevents a competitor from raising more than you. In terms of the expenditure limits, I think I'm comfortable with 750 for individuals. To be honest, I don't know, at least in my district, many people that would even contribute that amount to, to be very blunt, but I am comfortable going higher. I did think that we should try to match for inflation where we can. And then sorry, for, for.
For the alignment of contributions for individuals and organizations.
Organizations, yeah. I think increasing over time to 1,000 makes sense. Thank you.
Through the mayor, if I may just clarify, so we're talking about contribution limits, not expenditure limits. So just to be clear.
Yeah, contribution limits.
President, was, you brought up that we might, it might be of us to be, have some parity, meaning rather than have one be one, one be the other. And I'm not hearing consensus from the council. So I was hoping you could explain why you, why you said that or what the background was.
Well, I think it's more typical to have a single contribution limit. I think it's just more administratively efficient. It's much less typical to have a contribution limit that differs between organizations and individuals. So that's essentially the reasoning for keeping the contribution limit the same for individuals and organizations.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I think I was saying for individuals, 750, and then for organizations, thank you, 1,000.
I may add to the mayor, I mean, if we, if we get to equalization over time in the relatively near term, I think that's something that is up to the council to decide. But I think whether it's eventually getting those limits equalized or doing it in one fell swoop, I think that that's the decision for the council this evening.
Just one more comment. I know we're not talking about independent expenditures, but as an iteration to the dashboard, I would be interested to see in after an election cycle, you know, where those IEs actually came from or what the committee names were. I don't know how much public information we can actually get, but just having more information on the IEs would, would be an interesting data point to collect.
Absolutely.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you through the mayor and thank you, City Clerk McTaggart, for your presentation. I did just want to ask a clarifying question related to number three here. It seems to note that we could continue reviewing contribution limits or adopt an automatic adjustment. But could we potentially adopt an automatic adjustment and continue to review it as well?
Yeah, we could bring this item back as we currently do, but noting that it's pegged to CPI. So that that's another option.
Okay. I appreciate that. As I, you know, just as some contextual comment, I think I would favor that, by the way. I think there's value in reviewing our overall practices as we have been beyond the contribution limit. And I think additionally, we could, we could try something like CPI and, and review it to make sure it's meeting our needs. I think I would like, I hear a couple colleagues noting that there doesn't appear to be enough beneficial impact to voluntary expenditure limits at this time. And I would agree. And, and especially because there seems to be some, some discussion and interest in bringing an item back to council with regard to sign reform. I would like to propose to my council that we add to that something that I think would potentially add beneficial impact to those expenditure limits, which would be revisiting the topic of public financing. We did talk about this in the last review and I feel like it got two votes. And to me, what, you know, I mentioned then that voluntary expenditure limits really, you know, could provide some value without public financing, but they provide a lot more value with public financing. Because then if you have a package that allows somebody the opportunity to get some funding from the city or the public process, sort of as a that in itself would, could effectively be the reward or incentive for adopting a voluntary expenditure limit. And I think it addresses a bit of what Mr. Simpson brought up in his comment. There, there is concern, I think, if we were to increase the contribution limits, potentially doubling them for the individual side. Does that, you know, does that serve the city's interests in ensuring that there's an opportunity for a diversity of candidates to run for council? I think, I think there's a potential to diminish that ability by increasing the contribution limits. But I would have less of an issue with it if we could explore public financing options, because I think then you have multiple options and pathways for people to run for council as they see fit. So I would like to just ask council if others are interested in this.
Do you have a recommendation for how much you think? Like, what would be the amount of public financing available?
No, I don't. I think that's something we could, that we could, we could get some information back from staff and, and perhaps deliberate at that point.
I'd be open to considering it. I would also, I mean, I'd be, I'd be open to having like a study session on that and actually having Martin or someone appropriate present data and see what other cities of our like size with five districts, how they made it work. My issue is that we are approximately $5 million. Like we, we have a, I don't know if this is the time to do it. And so that's my, my number one concern right now is actually the debt that we have right now, or the, you know what I mean?
I hear you, but I actually, I like the idea. I think a study session on this topic would be interesting because we want to promote diversity of candidates running for office. And, and that is, you know, I, I thought about this a lot on my campaign. I would not be running if it wasn't for district. And, and coming from the East Side, in our history, there's only been three people from the East Side on the council. And there's only been six people ever elected from west of El Camino. You know, so if we really want to have more diversity of thought and, and more diversity on the dais, that might be a way to do it. And it would also probably incentivize younger, you know, residents to consider running too.
Did I get three?
Okay.
Three for a study session.
Yeah. Excellent.
Four for a study session. I think five for a study session.
I guess my question is to the city manager, what, the amount of effort or the city clerk versus everything else that's going on? That's my concern.
So it's something we did not plan for. If it's as simple as just doing a bit of research, I would look at, you know, we'd have to figure out what we'd have to set aside to, to bring this forward. I can go back to our team and just let you guys know what, what the trade off would be specifically to bring that item.
Yeah, that would make me more comfortable to know what we'd have to trade off.
I, I mean, Adam, given that we have some time until the next election cycle, would you be okay if this came back in six plus months, et cetera?
I would, yes. In fact, I was, I was, you know, I was prepared tonight to bring this up without asking the question and noting that I might bring it up in a, in a future blue sky even, because I'm really sensitive to our bandwidth. I frankly feel that, you know, in a way, this is kind of, you know, an extra blue sky ask. And, and so I want to call that out. You know, I was considering not bringing it up in this way, but frankly, I'm hearing multiple council members talk about other aligned related topics. I also heard an interest in bringing back another study session anyway. So I sort of felt like I would, I would like to ask the question, but could push it back.
I mean, yeah, would we be able to maybe say the last quarter of 2025? Does that sound?
So I would prefer that you do it on an off-election cycle year. So this year would be the appropriate time.
Last quarter of 2025.
Well, let me go ahead and I'll, I hear the direction. Let me figure out how to put it together and then we can give an update in the council weekly update. How about that?
Thank you very much. Oh, yes. Pardon me, City Attorney.
So another question is timing, and you've just addressed that question to bring that at a future day, perhaps in the last quarter this year. As to the other questions that are on the screen, I mean, typically what we do is depending on council direction, we would bring back an ordinance that would go into effect, say no later than January 1st, 2026. So it's aligned with the next election cycle. So and a public financing scheme, you know, there, there's a fair amount involved in that effort. And so that would not be in effect for like the next election cycle. It would take a lot to get that up and running if that was the eventual council direction. So my question is, is are you envisioning a two-phase process? Like a short term, in the short term, giving staff direction to amend the ordinance that would go into effect no later than January 1 of next year? And then later exploring this public financing concept?
Well, I guess one thing I'd like, I liked Adam's idea about reviewing continuously. So I think we can still make, hopefully reach consensus to give direction tonight. But then after the study session, you know, continuing to review and revise based on what the findings of that study session are.
And I mean, if there's a motion, I, and I don't think that there's a motion, but like if there's any sort of direction the council can give, can we say something to the effect of will not be affect, go into effect until the 2028 election cycle?
Well, this sort of gets back to my original question is, what do you envision in terms of timing for both the contribution limit change and related at its ordinance? And also this public financing idea? Like, how do you envision that playing out?
So through the mayor, if I may, I think I personally, for what it's worth, would be comfortable with going ahead with direction tonight for the next election. Without, you know, with the understanding that public financing would be something we would consider for a later date. Not necessarily for the next election, but I would appreciate having that study session. And as Councilmember Sveko Kuditsky mentioned, continuing with our biannual review and perhaps considering it for the, for the following election would be something I would be comfortable with.
Okay. I think question. Thank you.
And I'll just try to finish and wrap up by answering the other questions by noting, especially given what we just discussed, that now I am more comfortable with an alignment of contribution limits. I guess I'll hear from the, I'll defer to the mayor to some extent. I heard 1,000, I heard 750. I think I'm comfortable with either. I, I guess I'll go in at 1,000 and, and see what he says. I do think that the, so that would be effectively an adjustment to 1,000 and aligning for that purpose. And I would, I would appreciate CPI, but continuing to review. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Originally, I came in with the idea of just making them both 1,000. But then someone from the public spoke up and said, you know, it's not about the money. And I agree, it's not about the money. So I, I'm okay with 750 each. But obviously I need to have three nodding heads for that, but that's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking that we should be looking to adjust and we should be reviewing with each, like after each election cycle. I do like the idea of having something in place like CPI, but I wouldn't want it to be a weird number. And I know that sounds silly, but it's already confusing enough to tell people like, this is all you can write a check for. So I would say like, if it would be CPI rounded off to the nearest $5 mark or something like that, so that it's not like $775.33 or something weird. Sure. As far as voluntary expenditure limits, how much is it currently set at?
It's, it's based on population of the district. So I think for District 49,000 for District 4 and about 52,000 for District 2.
Okay. I'm okay with it, but I think, you know, we should try to figure out more incentivization as to why you, why you're going to do it. Yeah. I mean, having a footnote somewhere saying that I did it doesn't, doesn't bring me joy. So. And then moving on to campaign finance transparency. I think that everything the staff has been doing is great. I think we should continue to lead the way with this. We're really a role model for the rest of the county and probably other counties in the Bay Area. So I think we should keep doing that. And on public financing, I am. And on public financing, I am in the same mindset of, I think we should put, I think we should move forward with the contribution limits for this election cycle and look at public financing for the next election cycle and hopefully bring it back for a study session at Q4 of this year. And I think that's all your questions, right?
Yes. So just to recap for the direction requested, I have majority of council, just working backwards. So for review process for contribution limits, I'm hearing a majority to link to CPI with the move to routinely review and on our current basis, post-election review. So no changes to that. We would continue to have our post-election review within three months of the date of the certification of election. Mayor Newsom suggestion regarding rounding up to another dollar, we already have that or to rounding up to a more reasonable dollar amount for purposes of communication, we already have that in place for a voluntary expenditure limit. So that wouldn't be, that would have some consistency with staff practices. So there's council majority to go with that proposal.
Yes, is there? Yeah. Okay. Good. Yeah.
Item number one, I heard. I would just wanted to clarify that it looks like there's a majority to
I'm fine with that. I am similar to the mayor. I'm fine with 750. I was saying 1,000 just because it was simple one number, but if the majority of council is fine with 750, I could do that too.
Majority for 750 for individuals and for aligning contribution limits for individuals and organizations. I believe we have.
Yes.
750?
Well, so just to be clear, I don't recommend lowering contribution limits for
No, no. I, I was saying individual.
Well, then, no, I was saying that because I was saying parity. Well, then I don't think any individuals are going to give me $500. So, I mean, I just don't like, I, I did much more grassroots campaign than a lot of you. And so I'm okay with 1,000 each, but knowing that I'm gonna, you know, do everything on a budget and be aware.
So basically I'm hearing three from deputy, deputy mayor, mayor and council member Diaz Nash for 1,000 each for parity.
Yeah.
I'm sticking with my 750 for individuals and 1,000 for organizations, which is what it is today.
I echo council member Sviak Kuditsky.
Okay, so.
So Mr. Mayor, I, I would leave it up to you. I would say I
No, we need three votes, like three nodding heads.
Well, right. So, um, I mean, I, I think there, there were, there were two goals here, right? There was an adjustment of contributions and potentially aligning. So the only way you can achieve both is by going for 1,000, I think, tonight. But if you would be more comfortable with an adjustment of contribution to 750, then I, I am certainly comfortable with that.
I'm not
Go on 1,000, 1,000. She's going 1,000, 1,000. You guys are going 750, 1,000, and you have to make a decision. Sorry.
I was at 1,000, 1,000.
Okay, there you go.
So just to confirm, it's now 1,000 for residents and 1,000 for, okay.
Yep. The goal was, one of the goals was to get to parity.
Individuals. And yeah, I understand that. Just for the record, district four, 750 for individuals, 1,000 for organizations. District two, same.
But just for the record, we have a majority saying 1,000 and 1,000.
I understand.
You're on record.
Yeah, I just, I also am curious, will we ever get to a place where all five district elections happen at the same time?
No.
No.
Never.
There'll always be cycles because we have three and two. So you always have staggered.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just. It is interesting that, you know, the council members from the, you know, districts, the equity priority districts
run together.
Are running, no, are actually asking for lower campaign contribution amounts than the districts that tend to have significantly more wealth. And I, I just, I do think that needs to be called out.
Just to be clear, I started at 750 and 750 for the parity perspective. I'm, I'm
I understand.
Yep.
I think we can give staff direction. I think we have a majority. I think it is what it is and it's done.
We have the direction that we need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Brilliant presentation. Okay. You need a minute?
Uh, yes, just one second.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It'll take a minute to switch.
While you're setting up, I'll talk about what we're doing next. We're moving on to item, agenda item number 11, the 2425 mid-year update and budget amendments adoption. We'll have a presentation from Karen Huang, our finance director. We're going to adopt a resolution amending the FY 2425 operating budget to reflect the recommended mid-year budget adjustments and receive the FY 2425 mid-year budget update and approve adoptions or and approve, adopt, approve to adopt, there's a word missing, to prove to adopt a resolution amending the FY 2425 operating budget to reflect the recommended mid-year budget adjustments.
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Deputy Mayor, members of the council. My name is Karen Huang. I'm the finance director with the city. Tonight's presentation is the city's current fiscal year 2425 mid-year update. So we, we want to take this opportunity to provide to the council and the public to share our financial status and, and where we are financially in the middle of the fiscal year. And this is developed based on a look back to how we performed last year and based on the transactions that we collect for mid-year December. We have six months data in, in accounting. And we, and also when we develop this year's budget, we, we base on a lot of estimate and assumptions and information that we don't know at the time. So now we have some new information. We gather them and we consider all of these factors into this mid-year update. So let's take a look at our chart, sorry. So tonight's presentation actually focused on the city's major funds, which is the general fund and the shore fund. And at the end, we'll ask for council action, whether you would like to approve the mid-year recommended budget amendment. Before we look at our current fiscal year, we want to take a look back at how we perform in the, the last fiscal year, 2324. We just finished the audit. Actually, the audit financial is in tonight's agenda. And as you can see, we started last year with a $12 million deficit. We amended the budget to accommodate additional funding for the wet weather preparation and, and dry out deficit to 17 million. And last year around the same time, I came to the council and provide a mid-year update. And at that time, my projection is this $8 million deficit. We closed the year with a break even year, looks like a break even year, but that's from the accounting perspective, which is booking all the transaction based on our accounting standard in order to pass the audit. But budgetary wise, how are we doing? So one of the things that we counted into the audit financial, it's a $3 million mark to market unrealized gain. We sometimes call that paper gain, which is money that we don't necessarily have unless we sold every single thing in our investment portfolio, which we don't do. That means it's a gain on the book, but it's not spendable fund. And also we budgeted funding for measure S. Measure S is a sub-fund to the general fund. And some of the fund haven't been spent, but it's already budgeted for CIP. And if the funding has been spent based on our budget, then we are not looking at a break even year. We are looking at a $5 million shortfall. So I just want to bring that up to the council that looking back on the audit financial, accounting wise, we, we have a balance here. But funding wise, we are actually in a hole of $5 million. Yes, we are still doing better than the, the last year's mid-year and, and but we, we actually in actual shortfall now because in the past, when we budgeted, we, we thought we have a deficit. We end up have a surplus. This year, it's, it's, it's the first time we actually in a shortfall, in a deficit. So let's take a look at how are we doing mid-year in the current fiscal year. General fund is the primary operating fund for the city. It fund all the essential services. So we, we have our adopted budget approved by the council in June. We were projecting a budget deficit of six, six points, oh, 10.6 million dollar. And at mid-year, we are looking at the current budget standing at 14.1 million deficit. But after we take into all the factors, projecting revenue and expenditures, we are looking at a 6.4 million dollar deficit, which is also better than we originally thought, but still projecting a deficit. On our general fund revenue projection, property tax is the, the biggest tax revenue the city get. It's the largest and most stable revenue. And we are projecting $84 million for our budget projection and the mid-year come back around the same. So we are on track with our budget. Breaking down what, what element is making up of our property tax, actually secure property tax is the biggest portion in our property tax. And the second biggest is VLF. And last year I spent a lot of time updating our, our council on VLF shortfall. And I just want to show you proportionally how big is VLF in, inside the property tax revenue. And as you can see, the blue bar actually is quite, quite good. It, it get bigger year over year, but the orange portion is quite uneven. And we will talk about that, why it's uneven. The other element, including excess ERAF and other property tax, they are quite stable. As you can see from the gray and the, and the yellow bars. VLF, it's stands for property tax in loop of vehicle license fee. It's a revenue swap back in the days when the state is in budget shortfall, they, they swap VLF and give us something called this property tax in loop VLF. The funding for this revenue, it's not reliable because it's rely on ERAF and property tax from non-basic A school and as less and less schools belong to the non-basic A status, the funding for this, it's just not enough. So we got into this persistent shortfall for VLF. And we always have to go to the state to ask them to backfill it. And every year it's getting difficult, more difficult than, than previous years. So we will talk about how our forecast is next year for VLF, but just focus on tonight at mid-year. We are looking at VLF actually come, come at around what we budgeted. So as I highlighted in the slides in front of you, we are projecting our VLF entitlement, it stands at 16.3 million. The shortfall for this year is 7 million. And we successfully get the backfill, the 4.1 million. So we actually got the money already in August. So that's locked in. But the shortfall $7 million, we, we have, we have, and we see it. And we have no commitment from the state whether they will pay us two years later either. So that's still a question mark. That brings us to, to this year's VLF is at 13.5, which is still a good news because we got the VLF shortfall from two years ago. And that's what is causing the uneven performance from VLF because your shortfall is growing and you are relying on the two years delay, whether you will get the payment and sometimes it shift your revenue a little bit. Moving on to the next general fund revenue, which is our sales tax revenue. This is the second largest tax revenue for the general fund. It, it jobs during the COVID years, but it rebounds strongly in, in the previous years. So as you can see, there's a jump there in fiscal year 22, 23. But as we close last fiscal year and, and, and monitoring how sales tax is performing in, in 2425, we noticed a job in our sales tax. Accordingly, we have to adjust our budget projection for this year by reducing our sales tax budget projection by 2.2 million dollar. And the reason, as we explain in our staff report, is mainly because of general consumer goods retail sales have job. Online sales actually increase, but retail sales have job. Also, it, it has something to do with auto sales and fuel and service stations. Those elements are part of the major sales tax components. They all show, show decline in, in our current review. So we'll continue to monitor it and report back to the council as we know more. But we, we potentially need to drop our sales tax even more than what we have, we are asking right now. The third largest general fund tax revenue is real property transfer tax. As you can see, the blue bar, it's really uneven. It's pretty unpredictable because real property transfer tax has been really sensitive to our economic cycles. The one shiny spot this year and the positive news is that we start receiving measure CC revenue, which is showing on, on the orange bar here. We already received close to $5 million at the middle of the year. So we are projecting when we close the year, we'll at least get about $6 million. So we are adjusting our revenue up from the projection of $8 million at $6 million to $40 million for this current fiscal year. Other miscellaneous revenue adjustment that we are proposing is on business tax and golf revenue, and also we are bumping up our investment earning projection because of high interest market. Overall, as we sum up everything, we are projecting general fund revenue is doing better than what we originally thought. It's going to outperform the budget projection by 4.1 million. So with that, we are proposing to amend the budget revenue by the following element that we just mentioned to the council. I'm not going to read through all of that, but we have went through all the major items here. Next, let's take a look at the general fund expenditure. General fund expenditure, it's really, the budget is a legal authority for the city to spend up to the maximum level. This is the authorization from the council. So our mid-year budget review, actually the focus is to make sure our, our city have, have the authority to finish the year with enough budget in it. We do look at our performance and find out whether we have enough and how are we performing? That's why we are projecting on salary and benefit, we, we are likely to have $1.5 million savings because of vacancy. And traditionally on our operating, non-personnel operating expenditures, we will come back with about $2 million savings because department have the budget, but they don't spend it all. So historically, I, I felt comfortable that we'll finish the year with $2 million savings. So combine all that, we are projecting mid-year will, will have about 180.3 million dollar on general fund spending, including transfer out. So as I mentioned, the, the mid-year's focus on expenditure is to make sure that we have enough funding to finish the year. Our department have requests to increase some of their budget element. The city coast office have requests to increase their operating budget because of the election cost is coming in higher. Our public works department always look at their budget that got allocated to the wet weather preparation last year. And there's a portion, a small portion that haven't been spent. We would like to re-appropriate it so we can carry it over to this current year and continue to spend that money for the wet weather preparation. So as we listed on the slides here, that's the two mid-year budget expenditures amendment that we asked the council to consider. So to sum up what we talk about, we started the year with a deficit projected at ten point six. As we've, as we approved different different budget amendments since July first, our total budget is at fourteen point one deficit. That number might go a little bit higher as we might have more amendment coming in until June. But we, at least at mid-year, we are thinking we probably will end the year with about six million dollar in deficit. It's it's not going to be the 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 ten, ten point six million dollar as we originally think.
And I want to quickly just jump in there. If you can go back to the last slide, Karen.
Yes.
If you look at just here, you'll see the ten point six million that we had budgeted of the deficit and it jumps up to fourteen point one million. The rise in that is the council approving funds to fix our pools currently, and then also the par three. And so those were the extra added costs. So that's why you see that go up. I just want to be clear with the council and the community to know why that jumped up.
Thank you. So with that, we, let's take a look at the general fund balance. We finished last year with one hundred and eighteen million in general fund fund balance. And because we are projecting a six, around six million dollar deficit, so the general fund fund balance is is projecting to come down a little bit and the year with about one hundred and twelve million dollar, which is still a really high balance. So actually, I'm jumping ahead a little bit. Because of that, we are going to have a general fund reserve policy study session with the council to really take a look at what is the right size for our reserve? What is the the buffer that we want to build to have the safety, but also don't miss opportunity to continue to invest into our community? So coming up, March seventeen, we'll have the study session for the council. And we'll we'll talk about general fund reserve and how how to approach the the right level of, sorry, the right level of reserves to set aside and 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 really build a policy framework to guide the future and 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 help us through difficult time, good time, and and knowing we will be okay. And and after that, we are going to have budget study session for the new fiscal year. Staff have been working hard to put next year's budget together. We are going to talk about operating budget. And also, our public work director, Matt Ferby, is going to present CIP budget review with all of us. And 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 it's a public hearing too, coming up in June second. And June sixteen is the second public hearing for budget adoption. So that's all the items that is going to come up. And we are all working toward that. So today is only the first update for for the council about the city's finance. It's usually usually the kickoff to give you an update today and then coming back with the budget study session and then public hearings. Okay, so I I think I wrap up the general funds mid-year updates. And next one, I'm just going to briefly go into the shore fund. Because shore fund is also a major fund for the city. It it's a little different than general fund because general fund mainly collect tax and provide services. Shore fund is operating like enterprise. It's supposed to generate enough revenue from user fees to pay for its services and capital improvements. So it's supposed to bring in enough to sales, to 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 sales, to be sales efficient. It's not to make money, but it should make enough money to support itself. So we are projecting the general fund revenue is going to be on track in terms of user fee because we we can't set the fee, how much we are going to increase the the user fee, which is about three percent. But we are projecting investment is going to do well. So we are bumping up our our shore funds revenue in order to reflect that projection. Expenditure wise, operating expenditure is going to come under the budget mainly because we still haven't operate the new shore treatment plan yet. We added staff, but we haven't hired all of them. So we are preparing for for the new staffing level, for the new shore treatment plan and all the additional expenditure that we may need for the new shore treatment plan. But as we have to push the shore treatment plans opening, we will see some budget savings because of that. Additionally, we will continue to see CIP spending because as we are closing this clean water program, finishing the shore treatment plan expenditure, expansion projects, we are going to expect more spending in in the months to come. Well, overall, shore fund is really healthy. I think we are ahead of the curve because of the work that we already put into it. We are sitting on a lot of liquidity right now, so which is which is good news. We have enough liquidity to finish the entire clean water programs and we'll still have left over to maintain this new shore treatment plan and maybe do some other projects. So we are projecting the unfunded fund balance for shore fund will end the fiscal year with one hundred sixty-seven million dollar left, which is a really good, good funding balance. And I think that echo to what Derek have provided, the the clean water program update to to council tonight is that we are not expecting to have any any high rate increases in future years. We will go through the approved plan right now, but we are not expecting to have ten percent or twelve percent rate increase like in the past because the the fund is in a healthy state. Okay, so with that, I I conclude my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions the council have and will ask the council to consider approve the budget amendment for the mid-year update.
Thank you, Karen, for your presentation. Before we go to go to comments and questions from the council, we'll open it up for public comment. Mr. Clerk, are there any requests for public comment?
No requests in chamber and no participants in them.
Okay, then we will close public comment and open this up to questions, comments, and directions from the council. Who wants to go first?
I had a feeling.
Thank you, Karen. So I'd actually like to start with a macro level comment and question. Just given the current events with the US federal government, including the widespread disruption of agency operations and the freezing of funds previously appropriated by Congress, would it be possible for city staff to prepare a report on all programs in the city of San Mateo that could be impacted by these developments? I understand that tonight's budget resolution is based on adjusted estimates of local funding sources, but going forward, I do think the city council will need to have fuller context when making decisions. And and specifically, for example, like what are the risks to our senior lunch program, community development grants from the Housing and Development HUD, or even environmental protection?
So I'm happy to answer that. And don't forget our police department, too, that gets funding from the Department of Justice as well. There's a number of different federal funding sources that the city receives. And our staff is currently monitoring what those impacts are. We can go ahead and we can share an update in the council weekly update so you can see exactly what those funds are overall. But I know that we're diligently monitoring that. And I know that each department that is getting impacted or the service in the program is also aware of these issues and they're monitoring that as well. Because there are different requirements, too, that we're probably going to see in grants to check different boxes and what have you. So we're gearing up for all of that and trying to understand the greater impacts here.
Great, thank you. And the reason I also bring that up, I know we have the March seventeen meeting, so that would be a great time to have that update. But also with Blue Sky coming up, in order to really prioritize, it would be good to understand potentially what is at risk.
So I don't know if I'd have the full list by Blue Sky this coming Saturday, but I can say over the next few weeks, we can go ahead and get the on-compassing list. If we have an issue, we don't have a cash flow issue per se. But if we do have an issue, we will bring that to the attention of this council immediately. You will be aware of of what's happening and then we can move forward accordingly.
Great, thank you so much. And Karen, I do want to say that the summary report that you prepared tonight for this resolution is excellent and very helpful. I definitely have some questions about the vehicle licensing fee shortfalls, which are significant and I frankly scary. As we consider the budget resolution, would you, can you provide a better summary overview for the public about the VLF funding impacts? I I think generally, you know, the community needs to understand these issues in a clearer term, clearer terms.
Sure, VLF shortfall is a complex topic. I I think we could use the the county's presentation to be part of the next budget study to just explain what the issue is. And and perhaps that would be a good education and 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 to get common understanding what we are talking about because we keep talking about VLF, it's an issue, it's a concern. But what is it and why it is a concern? So I I believe walking through the council and the public from the beginning with that that presentation the county put together, I think it's a really good illustration to highlight what the issue is and where the funding shortfall come from. Let's plan to include that in the A post-study session.
And and that brings me to my next point, which was, you know, can we get, it's, I I see that we have a lot of meetings, but getting at least quarterly updates. And also, in the staff report, there were some comments about a county working group with the state to address VLF, if we can get quarterly updates on that as well.
So I just met last Friday at 8:00 AM with my my counterparts. So I am part of that working group, selective, three city managers and the county manager. So there's four of us that are part of this. I've been on that group for the past year and a half. We have the most to lose here, the city of San Mateo, because we are the largest city in the county. So when you look at the six point six million, that is the most out of all the cities. The county is the only bigger player in this VLF area where they would take the biggest hit. And so we take that very seriously. We're also working with our legislative reps, that's what we have to do. Assembly member Diane Pappin, Senator Josh Becker, Mark Berman, Senator Weiner, just everyone and everyone who we can get as a coalition. It's a very tough subject. And we've tried to raise it to the Department of Finance, to the governor's attention. And so we'll continue to do that every every step of the way.
And I'm glad you brought that up because I I know Diane Pappin is championing this issue at the state level. And if we can get regular updates on how the city is liaisoning with her and other assembly members on that matter, that'd be great.
So similar to last year, even our former mayor wrote an op-ed piece in partnership with our with our legislative reps, actually. And so you'll see, over these next few months, you're going to hear from myself and from staff and the regional players all about this lockstep, how we go through this, this is what happens every year. And so you're going to get to have that experience here. And we also try to engage the public significantly.
My day job is literally this. I'm literally the chief of staff for a senator. So if you want to talk VLF, come talk to me offline, please. Thank you. And then just two factors on the budget resolution tonight. Can you share more detail on why the November twenty twenty-four election costs exceeded budget expectations? Was this a one-time event or do you foresee increased costs going forward?
I would let actually Martin to answer that question. He knows more about that.
Absolutely, happy to chime in here. So we're not expecting to receive the final invoice from the county until April. We did receive an estimate from the county elections division that had a low estimate and a high estimate. We did not budget for the high estimate. We didn't get the actual estimate until after the budget was approved. So the delta essentially is what we're preparing for is that in the event that we do get the invoice and it shakes out to be closer to the high-end estimate. We haven't received any additional information from the county elections offices to the causes of these increases. We took the prior election and adjusted depending on voter registration using the the county's formulas for determining their estimates. And we arrived at around two hundred and fifteen thousand, ended up being closer to the high-end estimate being closer to three hundred and thirty thousand. There's a number of factors that could go into that. It could be increases in voter registration numbers, the associated costs as it relates to mailing and printing increases, logistic costs increased. But unfortunately, we won't know the final cost until closer to or in April.
And just from experience working in three different San Mateo County cities, this has always been a difficult subject. It's really hard from the elections office to really figure out exactly what that number is, and it fluctuates every time. And so I'm experiencing the same thing with this city as well. And so we try to get those numbers from them in advance, but they're very difficult to get from them.
Okay, thank you. And then I know this was in your presentation, but I'm just, as you all know, funding for flood mitigation is very near and dear to my heart and a top concern for residents across the city. Tonight's resolution includes a line, and just to quote, "A request for reappropriation of two hundred and twenty-four thousand in unspent FY twenty-three to FY twenty twenty-four funds for wet weather appropriation." So just to confirm that this line does not mean moving funds away from DPW or flood mitigation projects, but simply means that the previously allocated funds are moving from one budget cycle to the other.
Yes, because budget is budgeted for a fiscal year. If you don't use it, normally it reset to zero, you start over. By re-appropriating it, you're not losing that funding. From last year, you carry it over so we can continue to commit to the work they haven't finished.
Yes, we do want that. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. No more questions from me.
Okay.
Thank you through the mayor. Bunch of sort of all over the place questions. Does your forecast include the impact of the San Mateo Marriott closure?
I didn't bring the hotel TOT tax as a slice. It used to be one of our major revenue. It bring in pre-COVID about seven million dollar. Because of the Marriott closure, our TOT hotel tax dropped to four million dollar and it's no longer a major tax revenue. So that's why it's not even a slice in tonight's presentation.
But it is included.
Yes, it's included.
Okay. And I saw on some somewhere a slide with the top twenty-five sales tax producers. And I am assuming that part of, we have our forecast, but then also as part of our economic development strategy, that we will be developing a very detailed strategy about how to get them and strengthen them and make them even bigger.
Yes, to update on that, I I think last year when I presented to the council about our our worry of high interest rate, how it impact the housing market, how it impact our property tax and and property transfer tax. One thing I didn't mention is how it impact our sales tax too. And and at that time, we don't know how it's going to impact our consumer behavior. But after the data is collected, we see the N V S L from last year and at mid-year, six months data collected, we we continue to see people enjoy the restaurant here in San Mateo. Restaurant sales tax didn't go down, it go up. But but the high interest rate environment, like car loan, it's much higher now. It impact our auto sales. And also, when you are spending money, you basically have to think about high inflation and then high interest. It have an impact on consumer behavior. So that all add in. So that all add into why sales tax have, it's not drop significantly, but it start to reduce from the two really high years. If you look at our sales tax, it jumped so quickly back to pre-COVID level in two years. And actually, it exceeded our pre-COVID. And it's, I think the fence to inflation partially, because high inflation, high gas tax, all contributing to this. But eventually, when it jump too high, you have to come back down. So I think we are seeing that adjustment right now. Not that our sales tax is going to go down from here. It will eventually stabilize and come back up, I believe. But right now, where we are at, we are projecting it to stay flat. And hopefully, we'll end this current years with something similar to last year. Just stay flat and not going down even more. That's the projection where we are.
So to piggyback on Karen's comments, I know that you asked just about our economic development strategy, and that is very important. It's a study session item that we brought to the council last November, and we're working on and developing it right now. But really, in best practices, the top 25, and I thank the council, because I think it was two meetings ago or maybe three meetings ago that you guys approved a contract with our new sales tax consultant, so that we can really be able to identify the top generators and be able to see what the fluctuations are itself. But that's what you just saw, that top 25, actually, we'll get it on the city's website for public consumption, because it is a public document. But what we will do is, as part of the economic development strategy and work plan, is that we need to be making contact and visiting and nurturing and retaining those top 25 sales tax producers, in addition to our top employers at the same time. And so that's all really helpful as we bring back the ED strategy. That's something that we'll be looking at and what we're already currently doing.
Good, excellent. Related to that, do we see the sort of the flatness of the sales tax and Measure S in particular as having a sizable impact on the work of Measure S? And I'm thinking specifically the smooth streets.
I think the impact is, we don't see a negative impact yet, because Measure S, we have been spending the money quite wisely. We don't spend it all. We commit the funding annually to street and to traffic management and also critical projects. So we use Measure S to fund the police department's roof replacement. We use Measure S to continue to fund street repaving. We also use Measure S to fund our Marina library rehab project. So Measure S has been providing a really nice funding source for things that just general fund itself cannot do. But we didn't spend it all. We actually kept a $2.5 million fund balance in it. And it's to weather the ups and downs from the sales tax. So we budget enough to support all the critical projects for CIP. But we also keep a buffer in there, just in case the revenue comes in will be a little unpredictable. But sales tax in general is really stable. I see the job as adjustment from the previous rise. So we'll continue to monitor it. I don't think it's something that you have to worry about yet. But we do see a sign of adjustment.
Think to the smooth streets question directly, because I think that's what you're asking about, is that as part of Measure S itself, we borrowed, we bonded out, was it 65 million or maybe less than that?
We normally receive $7 million for Measure S. So we bonded out for the smooth street projects. We pay about $2.7 million debt service to continue to pay the bonds. So currently, all we have left is the bond payment and $800,000 annual contribution to the street projects.
And so what we did is we borrowed tens of millions of dollars so that we could go out and repair and have the smooth streets program. Even with the funding ending, because we've expended all those funds, we still have funding to get through all phases. I want to just be very clear, all phases, and that includes the East Side Streets, since you heard from community members this evening as well. So everything that we've committed to, if you go on the website, you will see the chart. The funding is there to be able to complete all our smooth streets.
And they're all over the street, all over the city. And then just finally, could you give us a quick update on where we stand with staffing vacancies? Because that was clearly an important part of the budget or the forecast here.
So on staffing vacancies, I can speak to just last calendar year. We finished the year with hiring 140 full-time workers here for the city of San Mateo. We have an FTE of, I believe, I'm looking at, well, Arisela is not here now. I believe it's 550 or 549 FTEs in the city. So when you take that all into consideration, 25% of new workforce was hired in the last calendar year. That's significant. Forty were internal promotions, the rest were all from the outside. So you're talking about 100 new employees from other jurisdictions or new to the workforce that have joined us here in San Mateo. I believe we're hovering between 10 and 12% right now. But our goal is to get that down to about 6%. I think it's healthy to have a vacancy of 5% to 6% for us to carry over and give us the flexibility, especially as we are looking at the deficits that we see on the horizon too. And so that's something that we're looking at. But we also know that we need to have a strong workforce and have the seats filled so that we can provide top-notch service to this community.
Thank you. Those are my questions and comments. Thank you very much, Karen. Well done.
Councilmember?
Deputy Mayor?
No questions. Well, I have a couple. The first was, I saw that the golf revenue would drop down by about $200,000. How, what percentage of the year did that represent? Meaning, there was 12 months in the year, how many months did we? And I guess I'm asking just because, are we looking at the next year and saying, okay, if it's, are we losing a half a year? Are we losing more for the upcoming?
Yeah, so the golf, the par three restaurant, it was closed in mid-October. And it's likely to reopen in September, October next year. So we will lost revenue for part of the year for this year and part of the year next year. So that's the estimate.
And next year will be two or three times what it was for this year, then?
Yeah, so it will be less than half a year, perhaps.
Yeah, exactly. So we were charting and we're forecasting that all in there, because we did, you know, we typically would receive almost, I think, $300,000 to $400,000 a year in rent payments. And we've, are working through that right now, because right now, there's no one in there, and we're fixing that building.
Okay, thank you. I guess a question that I was thinking, and you mentioned that we're going to be talking to our sales tax consultant, is, you know, having them work with the data to try to figure out what change costs. So for example, you know, Marriott left, we didn't see that coming, and now we're out that revenue. But we do know, looking down, that we have some companies leaving. So if we know a company like Snowflake is leaving, we should be looking at that, saying, okay, what does that cost the city in revenue? And then additionally, when we look at like future development, if Hillsdale Mall moves forward with change, which all indications are that it would, I don't think it's like we can look at that as one contributor, because we've got dozens of stores and restaurants there. But it'd be helpful to have an idea of, you know, with that moving forward, does that cost, you know, a third of the mall's revenue from before? Or half the mall's revenue, just so that we know as we forecast, you know, what that looks like? So does that make sense?
Absolutely, and we already prepared for that. So let me just give a little bit of how we approached that. So what we did right off the bat, even before we met with the sales tax consultant, as we're, you know, embarking on this new journey and relationship together, we asked for them to basically geo-fence and look at the 10 focus areas that the general plan was passed with. So I wanted to see, lay it in amber, what exactly the baseline is of the sales tax that we were getting out of those areas. And then we can benchmark that going five, 10, 15 years from now. You can actually see the progression. But to your point, we also have geo-fenced and located our major retail hubs. So Bridgepoint, Hillsdale Downtown, and then a couple other nodes in the city. And that's where we can actually see the bottom line of what we are to expect and what we're projecting at the same time. And so it's really helpful for us to track. All this data is private, so I can't share it with the public. But it's something that helps us for our economic development strategy and better understanding as we plan for the future.
That's great. That sounds like exactly what I was asking. Thank you. And the last question was going back to the election cost. So I'm assuming that, you know, most likely it is going to come in higher, because that's the way it generally goes, right? But if for some reason it came in at the median, will that money then roll over for the next year? Or be reapportioned for the next year?
I think it would be just unspent, right, Martin?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
We need action.
Yep, I know. So I'm looking for someone to adopt a resolution. Does anyone want to make a resolution?
Yes. I propose moving to approve the mid-year budget adjustments for the general fund for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Can you please take the role?
Certainly. Councilmember Sverko Kuditsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
And Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Thanks, Karen. All right, we're going to move into our final segment, reports and announcements. Who wants to go first? I had a feeling. I'm going to call you first, or Prima.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Newsom. I do have a few things. Number one, I saw the city newsletter. And I just want to say thank you so much for raising public awareness about coyote hazing. This is something that has been brought up several times, especially in my district, living so close to the Bay Trail. And I do just want to remind the public to take a look at the city's website and the city newsletter for best practices. It is coyote mating season, so it is something to be aware of. All these techniques are best practices that came from fish and wildlife. This is a very common practice in other cities to have coyote hazing programs. I know it's kind of an interesting name, but these are best practices. There's no harm to the animals. So it's just something, I'm really glad to see the cities adopting and taking seriously. So thank you. I know earlier in the meeting, Humboldt came up. And one thing I did want to see if the council was open to, we've heard a lot about the data usage. And so I know that we had roughly four hours of data collected in advance of the last council meeting about Humboldt. And I do wonder if the council would be open to agreeing to spend a little more money as we explore alternative options on Idaho and Fremont to also go back and collect more data on usage rates for Humboldt, to actually get a better accounting of how much usage there is on the street. So is that something folks would be open to?
I guess I would, I would sort of piggyback on top of that and say, and I'm assuming this is going to be part of the investigation, is really understanding what's the full data set we want. And you're asking specifically for Humboldt, but, you know, one of our residents said tonight, what about second in Humboldt? What about second in Fremont? What is the data set that we need to be looking at? And so I would look to staff to give us a recommendation.
Sure.
So that we can really build off of that. And I think, I think the other thing is, how do we, you know, the near misses, the things that don't get reported, that seems to be something that.
So on near misses, and the chief can speak to this, but it's really hard to be able to.
I understand. I'm just saying that that's where I'm hearing a lot of frustration. So as you're thinking about things, any creative solutions?
So I hear two of you saying that, but I'm happy to go back and talk to staff. I'm going to be meeting with them, I believe, next week to go a little bit further into detail about our overall approach and next steps. So I'm hearing two nodding heads.
Well, and just to clarify where this is coming from, after the last meeting, there's been a lot of public comment about the data collection and if there was a way to get more data. And to Lisa's point, I think I'm, when I say Humboldt, I mean all the cross streets as well. But I think we're going to explore spending potentially a million dollars in the future. So spending 10,000.
It's probably more than that.
Or slightly more than that to get better.
I don't know if it's slightly.
But anyway, that's what we need your recommendation.
If we're going to make another investment, it would be good to have that data as part of the decision of how much, how, what is the frequency or cadence in which the roadway is actually being used?
I can totally take that back, and then I can get you guys an update and a council update. And then we can also talk individually, one-on-one, and then report out. How about that?
Great.
Sounds great.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
All right.
And then I did just want to, you know, thank the community for coming out about the bus depot. And thank you to the city for working so diligently with the San Mateo Foster City School District on that topic. And just please keep us, you know, posted on that going forward. And there is another school board meeting on the 27th of February. So 5:30 PM at Chess Drive. Thank you.
Nothing? Anything? Go ahead.
Something.
Okay, please. Thank you.
Okay, I have a, I have a couple things. I have a light announcement and then, or yeah, and then, and then hopefully a quick ask. So here's the light announcement. It's on Saturday, the 25th Avenue Collective is putting together an event called Spread the Love, and I hope everyone can consider attending. It's from 12 to 5 PM on 25th Avenue, specifically near Hacienda and Flores, the sort of the area between El Camino and Hacienda. A lot of local businesses will be out doing cool promotions. Let's check them out. And just as an idea, we have our Blue Sky meeting just before that at College of San Mateo. But after we're done, if you don't have anything else to do, that's where I'll be. I hope I see you there. Now for a quick ask. So I also had just something I wanted to ask related to the Humboldt bike lane item. And that is just to ensure that we can involve the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission in next steps related to our community outreach and our evaluation of these two bike boulevards. There was a bit of discussion with staff, with the commission. There was some questions about whether they would be involved. And I just would like to make sure that the council is interested and okay with having SIC be involved. I would think that would be given, but I am, I am asking.
Please, you hit the button first.
Can you clarify what you mean by involvement?
I would say, you know, my understanding is that council gave direction toward Alternative 3. And so involvement would not necessarily change that. In fact, it would not change that. But I, my understanding is Alternative 3 involved multiple next steps that had community outreach, public involvement, the SICs. You know, it's comprised to help the council make decisions on training, advise it, and to convene public meetings. So I think having them be part of next steps related to viewing what's going on with the two different bike boulevards would be appropriate. I hope that's helpful.
So in clarification, I'd be supportive of SIC being involved in outreach towards helping us develop a plan for Options 3, if that is where the council moves forward after we come back from data. But it's already at the city council level, so with regards to advisement or making suggestions or modifications, I would not be supportive of that. We're already, we're already passed that on at city council level. So I'm super into helping them helping out with outreach. I would not, I would not be supportive of an advisory capacity.
You would not be supportive of an advisory capacity for our advisory body?
On this project. We've already, we've already, it's already at the city council level. We've already made a decision about this. So if they want to help with outreach, cool.
Could they not, could they not help us with decisions related to any variables on these bike boulevards?
I stand what I said. I stand by what I said. If it's, if it's about outreach, they are definitely, they could certainly assist us with that. If it's about advisement on future, of future actions regarding the Humboldt bike lanes, I would not be supportive of that. I would not be a nodding head, if to quote Alex. I would not be a nodding head, if to quote Alex.
And can I ask the city manager and staff how something like this has been dealt with in, either in the past or in your previous experiences? Because this is, we're already sort of in an unusual process, so.
So I'd have to say that typically when an item has been brought to the council level and the council directs staff that, hey, we want to go out and look at this and bring it back, it's been at the council level that, that's kind of the direction that I've taken all the way through. But, you know, there's nothing to say that you can't have an advisory body also take a look at this. It's up to the council of what you want to do. But overall, it's been pulled all the way up to your level as a decision-making body, whether you want to push that back down, that, you know, to have as part of the process an SIC meeting in advance that you can hear their feedback. More than welcome to do that. It's just up to the council whether or not you want to keep it at this level or push it back down and then have it come to the council after they've had their feedback on the overall process. It would give basically staff two, I guess, opportunities to present at a public meeting instead of probably one. That would be the biggest difference there, or allow the public to line up and engage at a public meeting on the item as well. That, that's kind of the differences here, I would say, if you're going to have SIC be part of it. And also to do engagement.
You know, I.
No, they don't.
I think, well, typically, keeping up with the council, it stays with the council. But this is, I think this is an unusual path that we've taken. And I would be interested in getting, it is sustainability and infrastructure, there is an I in their name. So I would be interested in getting their feedback and interest. We still ultimately are the decision makers. I mean, SNI doesn't, I mean, they can say blue and we can say no green. But I just think that this is such an important community issue all across that I would, I would welcome that.
Would we entertain a joint session with SNI? I know that's been brought up in the past.
Well, I, I think it's a study session, that's one thing. But if it's, if we're making a decision, that's really not something that you do in a joint study session, or a joint session.
So can you clarify what additional purpose you see SNI providing? Just more community input?
Well, the SIC is our bike pad advisory committee for the city of San Mateo. They get quarterly updates from Public Works on all our bike pad projects. And so I think it's fair to say that they are probably the individuals in the city that know most about what we're working on. So I think as Councilmember Diaz Nash mentioned, their feedback on what might be a good approach for these alternatives and next steps is, is useful. And I think, you know, I, I don't know how I feel about a joint session at this time. I, I think that the, the conventional model of having sort of options come before the SIC and then come before council would be preferred. I think it gives council an opportunity to dive into the options a little more, hear what the public has to say about it at the SIC meeting first, get a sense of what the commissioners feel and, and have thoughts on in their questions as, as a first bite at the apple on this complicated and controversial topic. I'll just also mention that I think there's a parallel here in our planning commission and our housing element process. And I personally feel that it was important to get the guidance and feedback from the planning commission during that process. There was a point at which it was removed and brought up to council. And thankfully, I believe we were able to re-engage with the planning commission before we finished adopting. And, and throughout that process, I think it was important to engage sort of as many individuals in, with, who are, who are digging into this topic as possible to make the best possible decision.
And through the mayor, I would just note that this is not on the agenda. So if the council is going to give direction to involve another advisory body, I would just giving that direction quickly, make it, just being brief to the point. Because this had come up, this, this discussion was held at the council level before. So, and the council provided direction. So I would strongly recommend just wrapping this up.
So going down the list, so I have yes from, no?
Yes.
Yes, from the mayor?
I'm a yes.
Yes, I have a majority. And I figure, Adam, you're a yes.
Yes, thank you for those. That's in my comments.
Okay. Anybody else have any reports or announcements?
Yes. I have a few. So I was hoping, apropos, apropos of the VLF discussion that we had from Finance Director Huang's excellent presentation. I was wondering if we would like to have another special session or a study session on inviting our legislators and supervisor to come and congressional representatives to give an update to the city of San Mateo on what they're working on, including our new state lobbyist whose contract we approved today in our, in our consent calendar. And then I know we have a longstanding relationship with the federal lobbyist as well. I think it would be really important for us not only to build that relationship, but also to learn what's happening with the VLF and sort of what we're seeing at the state level or at the county level. And I just think that it would be wonderful if we welcomed in those representatives and gave them 10 minutes and just said, tell us what you're working on, if you might be interested in that.
Yes, I'd be amenable to that.
I like it. I see all nodding heads. We'll go ahead and get that scheduled. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not done.
But wait, there's more.
Oh, but wait, there's more. And then I also just want to make sure that I, with the chief in the room and desperately wanting to go home, I'm so sorry, chief. The Walk for Mental Health, the PAL Walk for Mental Health is coming up at the end of May. And I just want, I know we have a tradition of signing, having the whole council there and making a donation. I'm just wondering if it is in our budget to do that this year, given the challenges we've had, and if we can go ahead and just move forward on that earlier than we usually do.
And check with Martin. I don't know, have we given money in the past, Martin? The council or chief, has the council given money in the past to the walk?
Oh, sorry, I guess.
So I think there's a bigger item that, it's part of our Blue Sky, actually. Councilmember Lorraine brought it up last year of really looking at nonprofits and how we can support them and getting a list and having a discussion about that so that we can, I go ahead and provide monetary support. Maybe that's the avenue in the future so that the council can give direction. Does that work?
I'd be happy to. Well, I'm encouraging all of San Mateo residents and our individual council members in their personal capacities to sign up for the Mental Health Walk and support the PAL program. Because I think it's at the end of May, and I'm sure the chief can give us more information on that. Or, you also have to go to Lights and Sirens on April 23rd. I think that's the date. April 11th, made up that date. Sorry, chief. And then the last thing that I want to introduce is, I know that we had a big vote a few months ago, probably our first big action as a council where we appropriated $300,000 for, to update our historic ordinance. And I'm really glad we're moving forward on that. And as a result, because we're working on that, on, staff is working on that issue, I was wondering if we're, we're attempting to keep things local and we're, we're creating a local process. So I'd like the council to consider writing a letter to the Office of Historic Preservation at the state, asking them to slow down their review of the Baywood application. We are concentrating on developing the local process. And if the council is amenable, I'd like for me and Danielle to draft the letter as we both had different votes on that item. So I was against, I voted no, and Councilmember Svierko Gudicki voted yes on the appropriation. And this is basically, we are, we would work on a draft, we're not committing to sending anything in, and we would approve at a later date if the council is amenable to that.
Through the mayor, can I just jump in here? So I think during reports and announcements, the town, the council can typically ask for, say, agendizing an item for future agenda. So I think what you're seeking is council majority adding that item to a future council agenda for council endorsement of sending a letter of that nature.
Sure, whatever, whatever is.
It won't, it can't, it can't happen right now.
Okay, so we can pick this up at the next meeting to punt it to the next meeting.
I don't know if it'd be at the next, you know, if you wanted it to be at the next meeting, I'd probably have to take something off the next meeting in order to make that happen. But it's something that we can look at. I can go ahead and bring, you know, bring an item forward, but it's your, it's.
I would just note that I'm going to be traveling to Australia on March 3rd. I will not be here. So perhaps the one after that.
The 17th?
Yes. I concur with Nicole. You know, I know we really are determined to have and ensure that this is a local process. And so, you know, I, I do think if there's a way for us to proactively draft something, that would be good. And I, I do want to just call out that San Francisco's mayor recently sent a letter to OHP with their council, you know, asking for deferment of a decision because of the North Beach historic.
Application.
Application and the local process that they're going through. So thank you for bringing that forward, Nicole.
Persona, I'm looking to you. So could they, together, you know, independent of the other three of us, could they draft something and consider presenting it two meetings from now?
Sure, no, that's fine. If it's less than a quorum, less than the majority of the council, so, you know, that would be consistent with the Brown Act. But I, I just want to emphasize again, the direction is, does a majority of the council want us to put this on a future agenda for consideration of a letter? It's not necessarily discussed going into the details what the letter might include. It's, is it on a future agenda or not?
Okay, can we, I second Nicole's request to put this on a future agenda to revisit and discuss.
Is there a third person for a majority?
I'm recused on the matter. Because it's the Bayways.
So I'm looking at our deputy mayor and our mayor.
I don't know how to feel about this. It feels like we're being asked to consider taking a preemptive action as a city on a matter that has not completed its process through OHP. And which has in its design an opportunity for the city to give comment already. So I, at the moment, feel it's premature for us to give that kind of direction. What do you think, Mayor?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, so before it would be approved, there will be the state coming to us for review, right?
Right, so, you know, the process involves an opportunity for input from the city council. I mean, the State of Historic Resources Commission, as I've mentioned before during meetings when this is on the agenda, that the state can override the city's objections. But there, there is a, a point in the process where the city can provide input, yes.
But I believe it's only, we'd have a limited number of days to respond. So being proactive versus reactive could be beneficial.
We get to formulate a letter that says what we want to say. And we're not asking them to withdraw the application, we're not saying, please say no, we're just saying, slow your roll. Like, all we're saying is, we are working on a local ordinance, allow us to keep what is local, local. And you can chime in whenever you want to. We're not saying, don't. We're just saying, slow down.
And likewise, we're just having a conversation. We're not even deciding. So I think I'm okay with moving forward to have the discussion.
Yeah, I guess I am, too.
Let's, okay, we'll bring it on the 17th.
Thank you.
Anything else?
The only other comment was, the Blue Sky meeting is this Saturday at 9:00 AM at CSM. We hope that the public will come out and join us for Danish at 9:00 AM at CSM. Danish and bagels, probably, I don't know.
Rosal.
Rosal.
Continental breakfast with coffee.
Nice, okay. All right. Yes, there will be coffee. Thank goodness. Is there anything else? Or are we good to adjourn? Okay, then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.
Congratulations to our chairman. He is forthcoming, forthcoming, forthcoming.